Welcome, everyone, to the Town of Scarborough, September 3, 2019, meeting of the Planning Board. If you could all join me with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dorian, could you please call the roll?
Nicholas McGee.
Here.
Rachel Henrickson.
Here.
Roger Beely.
Here.
Robin Saunders. Rick DeCarri. Jennifer Ladd. And Rick Meinke.
Here.
Thank you. We do have minutes for the August 12, 2019, meeting. If we've all had a chance to review them, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. A little housekeeping, just to, for the record, Rick Meinke will be a voting member this evening. Thank you. And we're going to jump right into it. Number five, Jay Chatmuss requests a preliminary subdivision review for 34 New Road Assessor's map, R 35, Lot 17. Jemel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may recall, this is located in the RF and Aquifer Protection Overlay Districts. And the applicant was last before you all in July for the review of this proposed six-lot conservation subdivision. And at that meeting, the board requested several edits to the plan relating to lot design, the stream buffer, and roadway design. So the applicant did modify the road design and is now proposing a 22-foot-wide public paved street as requested by the Public Works Department. And as you may recall again, there were concerns raised about the applicant providing a 75-foot buffer adjacent to the entire portion of the tributary on the property. And it does look like the applicant did modify the property line of Lot 6 to address these concerns, but did not modify the property line of Lot 1. So staff continues to recommend that the applicant pull back this property line so the entire lot is outside of the buffer. Staff also raised concerns about the proposed stormwater facilities being placed on a private residential property as it appears underdrained soil filter number two is located within Lot 1. So staff has recommended that this property line be adjusted, again, to exclude the stormwater feature to provide a clear separation from ownership and future maintenance. And staff has recommended that the applicant provide a plan note on the final plan that requires all future development of the remaining land on the property to be accessed by the future right-of-way that the applicant's proposing. At this point, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jemel. That said, if you'd please introduce yourself, the project, we'd really like to hear about the main points of staff's comments and any updates that have happened to this plan so far.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions. Here this evening with the pleasure of representing Carmen and Jay Chatmuss regarding this particular project. As Jemel has already mentioned, we won't rehash old information, but I'm happy to address the information that is before you. Jemel touched on some of the higher points. I will certainly go through those. I'm actually going to add a couple to that. And then I'll entertain any questions or comments that you may have. The purpose of us being here this evening is a request to receive, up to the board, of course, preliminary approval, and then we will be back shortly for final approval. Go from there. So, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to be able to say that we do have the DEP permit. Last time we were here, it was pending, still outstanding, and we have subsequently received that, and it's all set. The biggest issue that was on the table last time, as far as the board was concerned, was the request to be able to expand the roadway coming in from New Road from 20 feet to 22 feet. That has been created. We have done that. We also mentioned that to the DEP in conjunction with the permit, and we are so far under the threshold for the Tier 1 that that was not an issue with the DEP. So we're about two-thirds of the way under that threshold, or two-thirds out of that threshold. So there's no permit, or there's no problem, and again, the staff does have the permit. So as far as the main elements that staff has identified for consideration, Lot 1, sorry about that. I know we talked about the buffers, and we were focusing on Lot 6, which is the last lot on the left. We didn't even think about Lot 1. It's not an issue. It's very, very minor as far as that 75 feet is concerned. And we'll certainly have that on there. It's only a few feet, basically, into the lot. So we'll certainly have that on there as far as the final plan is concerned. So there's no issues with showing that 75-foot buffer. Upon being on Lot 1, we've done a real estate study. And while economics alone does not enter into an equation for anything that's approved by the Planning Board, it certainly does enter into it in terms of the value of the project and the return on the investment. Toward that end, we've been told quite a number of times that in Scarborough, basically, in this particular area, one acre or more lot would be very desirable toward that end, toward the marketing of those properties. Toward that end, as far as the portion of the stormwater maintenance device being on Lot 1, there is a portion of it on there, but it's completely controlled by the easement. So if there's any issues in terms of any problems with maintaining that pond, that easement is actually going to go to and be a part of the Homeowners Association responsibilities, and they will end up taking care of that. That easement covers any liability for that particular homeowner without issue. So given that the end result is basically exactly the same, whether there's an easement on the property or completely off the property, it really doesn't make any difference toward the maintenance of that facility. So we would like to be able to keep that on there. The point being is that if we took it away, that lot would decrease, not hugely, but substantially less than one acre. And toward that end, we would like to be able to keep it at one acre. And again, the end result would not be any different. As far as adding the note for future access, that's absolutely fine. As far as restriction for future access to the overall lot, that's what Jemel and Jay and the rest of us had agreed to or discussed and agreed to months ago. So we'll certainly add that note to the plan. The one exception to that would be where the driveway and the roadway, the paper street roadway that you see at the bottom of your plan is located, that would ostensibly serve one lot and one lot only. That would be just to the, up the side of the, just the north of the small pond, the first pond that you see on site. There's a beautiful little building envelope back in there. It's actually not so little, that follows the existing driveway and that roadway down off of New Road. That would actually be restricted. In other words, that quote-unquote driveway could not extend as it does now between the ponds. This is for future development. So that any future development of the back area, which is almost all Upland, would actually come off of the existing road, or what would be the existing road at that time. And we'd be happy to put that note on there, but I just wanted to bring up the attention of the board that there is one more lot, literally, a long new lot, a new road, down at the bottom of your screen where you see that. We've talked about the waiver request. I won't go into that in detail. Staff is comfortable with the road being 22 feet, which it is. Also proposing the in-lu fee for the sidewalks. We don't, Jemel has mentioned that the applicant appears comfortable with this approach. We do. We would like to work with staff toward the amounts due regarding the linear footage. We can certainly do that with the staff. That's not an issue as far as the Planning Board is concerned, or as far as we're concerned with the Planning Board. We do agree in principle, to be sure, to that in-lu fee that we discussed last time. The Aquifer Protection Overlay, I'm just going down the notes as you probably see them in your packets. We will certainly state that on there. That's not an issue. The overlay, the Aquifer Protection Overlay District basically deals with commercial properties or any properties that might otherwise create hazardous waste or some type of toxic materials generating that at-site that would end up bleaching through the soils. This is just a simple residential subdivision. There's no issue toward that end, but we'll certainly refer to that as far as the notes on the plan are concerned. So there's no problem toward that. Roadway design. Public Works is recommending a steel guardrail. We certainly understand the pension of Public Works to be able to recommend something to that effect, but in this particular case, we would say that a guardrail, the wooden guardrail that we show is absolutely fine, especially now that the roadway has been yet widened even further. A steel guardrail is more for high-volume, high-speed traffic that is coming close to an area where if there was an accident, there actually could be a significant rollover or down a fairly steep embankment. Please keep in mind that the narrowness of the embankment on this particular section running in from New Road, the steepest area they've got there is about three feet. That's it. And with the widened pavement and the wooden guardrail at a speed that would be basically 15 miles an hour on a dead-end private road, a dead-end street, would be absolutely adequate toward that end. So all due respect to Department of Public Works, we think that the wooden guardrail is absolutely fine toward that end. By the way, for those of you who were with us when, last year, when we did the Carrier Wood Apartments just on Muzzy Road, Muzzy Road is a considerably higher-trafficed and higher-speed road, and that also has a wooden guardrail adjacent to the road. So I don't think that there's going to be any problems toward that end. It's a common use, wooden guardrails, and we'd just like to be able to keep it that way. As far as the road profile is concerned, showing the 15-inch culverts further embedded to show six inches on the bottom, that's absolutely fine. Doesn't change anything as far as the volume is concerned. We can certainly do that. That was one of the reviewing engineer's comments. By the way, Jemel has been very effective at taking the engineer's comments and putting them into your packets specifically and kind of rewording them to make it, take it out of engineer speak. So toward that end, we compliment him on that one, and this is very easy to do in this regard. Also talking about a cross-section, an additional cross-section in the location of those 15-inch culverts. We do have three of those already. We can certainly add the fourth one that's up the hill a little bit, but that's absolutely no problem. So we can take care of that as well. Pavement transition detail, again, not an issue. It's a simple detail. We can certainly show that. Basically, what that means is that we're looking to make sure that the pavement is, for lack of a better term, tilted to the point where water is going to flow downhill to the catch basin that is then, or will have the, by two minutes on the top of that, the pavement details. So that's not an issue either. Slipform curb details. Talking about showing the mold to be used for the concrete curb, that detail is actually on the plan. That's the DOT requirement for slipform, and that's already in your plan sheet and the missing details sheets. So that's no issue. And then slipform curbing is not embedded. Slipform doesn't get embedded. Slipform curbing essentially is set into the side of the road, and then the road pavement is actually built up on top of that or up the side of that. So it's not like we're, many of us may be used to seeing vertical granite details where what you see of the vertical granite above grade has got about, is only about a third of what's actually there. The other two-thirds, probably half to two-thirds, is actually below grade. For slipform details, that doesn't work that way. There is no portion of concrete that's actually below that surface level. There is a small portion of it that's set, and then the pavement is actually put up the curb, the side of it, so that anybody who hits that or whatever still has an anchoring on there. But it doesn't actually go, okay? I will defer to Angela as far as the, she's shaking her head over there.
I'm sorry. I just think we're getting into the weeds, and we do actually have a detail showing it. Scarborough has a specific detail which I could share with you. I don't think we need to.
Piece of cake. No issues. And then the last detail or the last comment on this sheet was about the street trees, adding some street trees. We've got quite a number of street trees along the frontages of all the lots. The comment is about adding street trees to the roadway from New Road to the angle. This is an area that we're trying to absolutely minimize the impact to as far as cutting. And remember, for those of us that were on the sidewalk, albeit quite a while ago, or for anybody who cares to drive by, that's a very heavily wooded area. And we are restricted by the DEP permit as well to only disturbing the area that we're proposing for the width of the right-of-way. So toward that end, there's really no room to plant any trees, and I'm not really sure in that particular area. And I'm not sure that they would do any good because there's going to be plenty of vegetation, including from fairly good-sized trees that are already there. If the board determines that that's an absolute requirement, tree's a tree. We can certainly put it in there. But I think we've got an overabundance of trees already in that particular area. Just not sure the necessity to add more in that particular section. Stormwater management. Talking about adding the, we've evaluated the stormwater management plan and the BMPs, the designers indicated that the increase in the tier of storm event shown on the BMPs, not a problem. We'll show that on the plan as well. Very easy to do that. And then just referring to the engineer's comments that, again, Jemel has melded already into these comments that we've just discussed. As far as open space is concerned, there's absolutely no issue in terms of the underdrained that's located within that open space. We can certainly take that out of that calculation. We were considerably over on the amount of open space that we were actually offering than what is required. So doing that is absolutely no issue. So we'll take care of that, and we still have plenty of open space that exceeds the minimum requirement for that. Homeowners Association, the staff will have a copy of that coming up with final approval. And then final subdivision stamped by professional engineers, surveyor, et cetera. We don't have any issues with that, but I would like to point out something that, to the staff, that you might want to consider for future. We try, when we submit plans to anyone, whether it's in Scarborough or anywhere else, we've had issues in the past, meaning over the course of the last 30 years or so, where stamped, the wrong stamped plans get out to the public, which means that if we stamp a series of plans for review by the Planning Board or zoning board or any other board for that matter, and the board has comments, which you often do, that we would like to be seeing on those plans. We don't want to have too many professionally stamped plans that are out there that are not the final copies. We're happy to do that if the board, if that's the pension of the board, to make that, sure that that's happened. But it obviously will happen when we submit the Mylar to you. I'm presuming there will be certain, there's certain standard conditions when we get to final that you'll want to see toward that end. We're happy to give you stamped plans, but again, we just want to make sure that those are minimized because we don't want to get the wrong plans out there. That's just a generic comment for the future, but there's no issue toward that end. And that's pretty much it. Given that, we're happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you may have.
Thank you very much. We do have an opportunity for public comment this evening. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this topic, please approach the podium, state your name, and let us know what your thoughts are. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. So I think for our purposes here tonight, I really kind of want to drill down on the stormwater, the underdrained soil filter that's below Lot 1. It seems to me like this is probably a bit of a sticking point between the proposal and staff requirements. So I think the board should weigh in on whether or not that should be on private property, should it be moved? And I'll kick it off with a question. The location of that filter, can it be moved somewhere else on the property? Or is it necessary to be in that location because of the way stormwater is all designed, meant to flow to that spot?
Exactly. It's the latter. When we enter into the project, any project for that matter, we look for, obviously, the best point, which typically the lowest point. In this particular case, there are two ponds in this particular situation, and that one is specifically designed to take that stormwater from that side. So there's really no other place to put it. Could we change the lines? Sure. But again, keep in mind, if this were not a conservation subdivision and a regular subdivision, any stormwater management devices would be on private property with easements anyway. So in this particular case, it, our argument is that it doesn't really matter as long as the language of the easement will cover the same information and liabilities and specific responsibilities for maintaining that device, whether it's in the common area that is maintained by the Homeowners Association or in a small portion, which most of it is, but a portion of it on one lot that is also maintained by the Homeowners Association, there's really no difference. So we'd just like to be able to keep it there, again, from the marketability standpoint.
So I'd like board members to just quickly weigh in on your thoughts on that one, being one of the major remaining main elements of staff identified points. Rachel, you want to start?
Yeah, actually, I don't have, I'm persuaded by your argument about the, it really doesn't make a difference as long as there is an easement there. But let me say that what we've talked about in the past, not just with the stormwater, but in general, is the no-disturbed area. And that would be a no-disturb area. And what I would be comfortable with is some sort of marking, either boulders or fence, on that lot indicating it is a no-disturb area in addition to the notice, some sort of notation on the contract, on the homeowner's deed. And that would be of a little more comfort to me, I think, if we do that. And then I see no problem keeping the lot as is.
Thank you, Rachel. Roger?
I basically agree with Rachel on that, but I am intrigued with your argument that the market value is enhanced if it's an acre versus cutting it back. Because to me, if I was considering purchasing that piece of property with that stormwater facility right there, I would be, I mean, obviously, you can't use it as a homeowner. So to me, if you're talking about a pure acre-plus, where it's totally usable versus what you have here, I just, I'm not sure I buy that argument, but at the same time, I could understand what Rachel's saying, so.
Thank you, Roger. Rick?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I think having the protected area marked is a good solution to this.
And is the applicant okay?
No problem.
All right. So now I'll open it up to the board for anyone else that wants to jump in with other questions or comments for the applicant. Roger?
Sure. Regarding the rail, the steel metal rail versus the wood, I would tend to agree with you on that because, to me, a metal fencing is something you see on a major road. And I think the wooden fence would just enhance the appearance of the whole neighborhood much better. So that's my thoughts on that. And I don't have any problems with most, I'm assuming all these other things that he talked about during his presentation can be handled at the staff, staff level, the majority of these things?
Well, yeah, leading up to the final submission.
Yeah.
So there's one more review from you guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Roger. Rachel?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that you're talking about there being at some point a lot along New Road next to the Francis Aubrey and Loletner, Aubrey property?
Yes.
Is that, so I would assume that at some point, then, you're going to come before us, that Chatmuss will be coming before us for a subdivision there?
It may not be, Mr., you may never see this again, but if we do, then yes, we will be showing that at that time.
Have you, in any of the contemplation of that, has there been any thought as to how such a thing would impact the ponds there, such a division?
Yes, it actually wouldn't any more than what's already here. If, it doesn't work on that. If I may call your attention to the depiction behind you, this is the area that we're talking about right in here for a potential house lot, and this is the street that would lead to it. Right now, the driveway comes all the way back up here to the house that's right up in this area. So what would happen is, at the end of the paper street that curves up into this area and the future development would be around here, the lot that's right down here would actually be cut off right in this section. And we've got a nice building envelope that's right in this particular area. They can be 75 feet away from any of the ponds and still be exceptionally viable. So it's a nice little lot toward that end that is actually served by this little paper street road down here, which is allowed per Scarborough standards. So this lot right here would ostensibly, in the future, at some point, or we would reserve the right to, for instance, if Mr. Chatmuss does do the, or Mrs. Chatmuss do the development, or if they sell it to somebody else who decides to do the development. Let's put it this way, at some point in the future, they're going to divest themselves of the property, and very likely will be developed, as most of Scarborough probably will be eventually. So toward that end, we'd just like to be able to reserve that right to have that single lot down in that particular area. And then everything else, and the notes on the plan would reflect that everything else would end up being restricted to coming off of the end of the proposed road.
All right, so there would be some sort of a note that says that Paper Street ends at a certain reasonable point?
And yes, we would end up actually, we can put a note on the plan toward that end.
Yeah, so that it's clear that it's not going to connect the back way through that development?
That's correct.
Good. I have a question. You said that the police were still considering the street name. Do you have a new street name?
Yes, it's Wood Duck Road, and we submitted that, and they are still running through the list, as it were. We haven't heard back from them toward that end. And if they do, we'll change it, but hopefully that will be fine.
All right, and one final thing. You indicate you have no intention of doing a trail system. I know that had been under discussion. Could you tell me why you're not going to have that trail system since we don't have a sidewalk?
Sure. We were proposing at the time that we'd love to do a trail system in lieu of the sidewalk and the in-lu fee. And that would actually open up, assuming that people of the sidewalks would ostensibly be for people, you know, walking back and forth, just jogging, walking, skiing, whatever it might be. And toward that end, we're discussing a pathway across the back of lots 2 through 6. In this particular case, given the expenses involved, if we're doing the in-lu fee for the sidewalk, which is fine, then we would propose not to do that trail system. Now, keep in mind that that's still open space. So toward that end, if the Homeowners Association decides that they're going to end up walking through those woods or doing a trail on their own, that's absolutely fine. Homeowners Association, open space, so they can certainly do that. But with the in-lu fee as well, which is quite expensive, we didn't want to go to that additional expense of putting that trail in there. Now, if we want to reduce or get rid of the in-lu fee, we'd be absolutely happy to put that trail there.
Well, I know there are other developers who do both a sidewalk and a trail system. And I'm just kind of concerned that, all of a sudden, an amenity and a place for a public gathering is disappearing.
Rachel, I understand absolutely, and I would be so forthright as to say, if this were a 10-lot or a greater subdivision, there would be absolutely no issue toward that end. As a six-lot subdivision with the length of the road that we've got and the expense that's gone into creating this, any additional expenses are getting very, very tight. Again, I know that economics doesn't enter into the argument, but it actually does to a certain degree. And toward that end, if we are going to be responsible for an in-lu fee, which is quite expensive, an additional expense of putting in that, any proposed trail would be, if not over the top, rapidly approaching that point. Otherwise, you're absolutely right for any few extra.
Of course I am.
Well, and toward that end.
That's the rule for the Planning Board, just so you know.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. I understand expense. I still would urge you to take a look at some sort of a gathering place availability in there for people to get together since they don't have the sidewalk, they don't have a trail. Where are they going to meet? There's no sense of community here. With the trail, there was an opportunity to put a couple of benches along there, create a place for people to sit and talk. And now we have an isolated, six-isolated building spots, and that's really not a community. Thank you.
Point taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Rick?
Regarding the fence, is it maybe because Public Works is worried about snowplow damage if they were to take care of this road, and that's why they're advocating for steel versus wood?
I can't speak specifically for Public Works, but I think it's probably more that, as any Public Works Director or people would typically espouse, given doing what they do, they would probably say, as Roger had indicated, you know, a steel guardrail is going to stop a semi and anything else that's cruising down a road toward that end. This particular, so toward that end, we understand what, why they would say that. But we, again, try to put this in perspective where this is a dead-end road with only six lots on it, and everybody's going down there, is probably going to live there. The road is now wider. The wooden guardrail still meets DOT standards, so toward that end, I don't think we have any issues.
I don't, go ahead.
I guess I can speak to having a conversation with Mike Shaw, the Public Works Director. And I think what they're finding is that the wooden guardrails, they are damaging them through the snowplows. And I understand that you made it wider, but it was wider from a narrower road. So what they're looking at is they would be pushing back from the shoulder, and then it drops into the wetlands on either side. So their concern is they'll be replacing that with a steel guardrail over a short amount of time. And so I think you might see additional comments during final review from Public Works on that if they want to.
Yeah, that would be kind of helpful because I don't want to, you know, handcuff them, and at the same time, I... them, and at the same time, I agree with Roger that aesthetically, for a little lot area, it would be nice to put the wood in. So I'll wait for the final on that. Just one other thing, streetlights. I didn't see anything. Is there any plans for streetlights?
No.
Would?
We tried to minimize what's kind of euphemistically referred to as light pollution.
Yeah.
In this particular area, it's very rural, there are lights, and I know we discussed this a little bit last time, but there are ambient lights on each one of the houses. So as far as a streetlight at the end, in this particular area, the other subdivisions that are out there, most of them, we took a look at, especially the one right across the street, doesn't have that, and we just don't think it's necessary in this type of rural environment. Now, having said that, I would, one more comment. If and when this road does get extended, that's a bit of a different story, because now we would have eight to 10 additional lots in the upland area at the end of the road, bringing the overall total to anywhere from, you know, 14 to 16, 17, 18 lots, whatever might be able to go in there. Now we've got sort of that economy of scale that says, if we're going to have that many lots, we probably should have one light at the end, anyway, or perhaps even two. At this particular juncture, I just don't think that light is necessary. And given that we've got subgrade power with transformers there, it's very easy to be able to extend anything, if and when the remaining property ever does get.
Yeah, and it's easy to run a couple of lights, given the fact that you're not, we're, you know, the sidewalk's not going to be there. Now you do quite potentially, and I think you brought that up last meeting, about maybe kids going to school, and in the wintertime, it's dark, to catch the bus. Maybe go back to the owner and talk about maybe one or two lights, just to cast a little bit. With the, you know, the cutoff fixtures, you're not going to do a whole lot of light pollution, and it might bode well for my vote for a wood versus steel guardrail. Choose your poison, I guess. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So a quick question on going back to the shared driveway, or the paper road. Is there any reason it remains a paper road versus like a private drive or a shared driveway type of access? Is there?
If it's only serving one lot, it only needs to be the paper street. If it serves more than one lot, then, it meaning this one or any one, then it would have to be built out better, more specifically. Otherwise, it just supports the driveway. That's a Scarborough standard.
Okay. So it would service just the two lots, then?
It won't, it only serves as one lot.
So that's not his driveway to the house in the back?
Yes, but that's the only driveway right now that goes to that back lot, so.
But when you add a second lot on that?
Well, no, because if the, if the back lot, if and when the back lot does get developed, then the only area, including where the existing driveway now ends at the house, the homestead that's on that property, that will all be part of the access from our road. It will not be, there will be no extension of the existing driveway.
I see what you mean, okay. All right, thank you. And then for the wood versus steel, I think I just kind of want to clarify with Public Works that are, you know, next submission, maybe some more detail around that. Aesthetically, I can see the point of wanting wood versus steel in a small neighborhood like this, but I got to believe they have the reasons, and I'd like to see them, so we'll see what that looks like. They'll take notes and get some more information for us. Yes.
Regarding the streetlights, do we know whether there's any kind of a streetlight or anything at McIntyre Way right now? And when, like, I know where I live, every place there's a new, there's a street, there's a streetlight. Not necessarily all up and down the street, but wherever there's an intersection of any type, there's a streetlight. Now, who's responsible for that? Is it the town, or is it the developer?
For the maintenance or for the install?
No, the installation.
So typically, during this subdivision review, we talk about that, where we look at intersections and curves in the road?
Yeah.
Like we were talking about in Bailey's last time?
Well, that's what I was thinking about, Bailey's.
Yep, yep. And then it becomes installed by the developer, and then when we accept the street, it becomes the town's to maintain and operate.
To maintain it, yeah.
Yep.
So do we have any idea about McIntyre?
Just want to go.
Are you checking their, checking their electrical bill or something? We just, on another project, we have a dead-end road similar to this one, and we're at the curve. They're putting a light at the, at the, oh, there is a street light there, okay.
So for the intersection?
Yeah, at the intersection. Now, yeah, in this place, McIntyre is not directly right across the street.
Wow, so you have to see, yeah.
Anyways, we've asked them, on this other project, to put a light right at the curve. So that's something to think about.
And I understand, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's actually our project as well, and.
Oh, it is?
That's a perfect example of what I was talking to Rachel about earlier. There's 11 lots in that subdivision, and this has got six. And there's no magic-triggered number of lots, et cetera, but that was enough lots, in our opinion, to say, we're not going to go here. I mean, as far as trying to avoid that, it just doesn't make any sense, because there are plenty of, there are more people there, more lots than are in this particular one. It's not that we want to avoid streetlights, it's just, in this particular case, we don't think it's necessary because of the number of lots on the street.
So I'm going to jump in and ask maybe staff's opinion on whether a note, would a note be an appropriate instance of saying, if this ever expands past the six units or six lots, that a light would be installed at intersection and, you know, at the end of the current dead end? Is that possible, to say if it ever ends up with an extension of more lots being added, that those are, those must be included in future? How does that work?
Well, I would think they'd have to come back in to do another approval through the board, right? So I guess at that point, it would be the willingness of the planning board to say whether or not they wanted to run infrastructure through an existing street, where it's obviously more costly to do it then. And at this point, like you're saying, with no sidewalks, and, I mean, the point about, like, no sidewalks, walking to school and things like that in the dark, I think you make a case that, you're going to have that long stretch with no houses. I think it makes sense, like you were saying about the end of the street. I'm not a proponent of streetlights, because it's just cost to the town, but in some instances, like you're saying, you have the ambient lights from the houses, but you have that first stretch where you have a straight shot in, and a curve, it would appear that the curve might be the place you want to look at, just so you see that bend in the road, especially if it's already lit at the intersection, which you'd have to check that, because we get a lot of complaints if people are trying to find a road and there's not a light, it's very difficult, especially on a country road like New Road.
All right. So I think we, as a board, owe the applicant some direction on streetlighting at this juncture.
I would say, I don't see a need for trees along that straight, stretch, but I would, I think they should, you should consider the streetlights.
We can certainly take a look at that at the curve. If the Cobra Light is at the, at the intersection, there's going to be, and that's not ambient light, that's direct light, that's going to be lighting, well, you know what streetlights look like, they're, when they're on, they're pretty bright. And toward that end, I think the, while not bathed in light, I think there's going to be quite a number, or quite an amount of light from New Road to the, to the turn, to the angle in the road. And then as we get up into the house areas, it's simply our contention that there's going to be enough lights on the houses themselves to be able to provide any indirect or ambient light for some, from a safety perspective. In those hours in the wintertime, when kids do go to school when it's dark, or they get, people come home, they drive home when it's dark, et cetera. Just think there's enough lighting out there. We're not going to make that a bone of contention. It just, we want to try to be able to keep lights down to a minimum and still be safe. In this particular case, we think the safety is there, given the six lots, but toward that end, it's up to the board.
Well, I agree regarding the lights from the residential buildings, you know, I don't think you need streetlights there, but I think you should consider the two that we talked about.
One at the curve you're talking about?
The, one at the curve, and then potentially one at the end of the street.
At the very end of the street?
No, as you go in.
Oh, in.
Off a new road, off a new road.
The intersection?
Okay. Didn't, Angela, didn't we just say that there was a Cobra Light there?
On McIntyre, on the op, I don't know where it lines up. I'm looking at Google Earth, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at Google Earth right now, and McIntyre does have a Cobra head. I don't know where it is in relationship to your entrance, and.
We can certainly show that.
But that is an opportunity, yeah, you might not need one because of that, so it's something you'd have to look at, how far away it is.
Sure.
From your entrance.
We can certainly take a look at that and have that information for you next time. Again, we're not adverse to it, we just think that'd be a little overkill, given the size of the development, but.
So I'll just throw in that, I think that curve might be a good opportunity for a light, even if there wasn't one at the intersection, I think that, that curve, you know, that's where people get themselves into trouble, is around a blind curve, and I, you know, see them all around town, and more lighting there won't hurt you, so.
Okay.
If I had to weigh in on it, that's the spot I would actually prefer to see one post in, if anything, so.
Yeah, I, you've sold us on, so much on the amount of vegetation and trees covering everything there, that I think the ambient lighting may not show up at that curve where it's needed for the kids. So I.
Point taken.
Yeah, thank you. I would suggest a light at the curve.
Okay, so I think you have some direction. So with, is there any other planning board comments at this point? So now that we've all taken some copious notes, I will make a motion for preliminary subdivision approval, pending that you'll continue to work with staff on these improvements.
Of course.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sure that's to be unanimous.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Item number six was tabled this evening. That was Kathleen Bailey requests a final subdivision review for 27 Ross Road. So if you're here for that item, it will not be heard this evening. Next item is number seven, AV Technic LLC requests a sketch plan review for the Downs Innovation District Assessor's Map, U-053, Lot 4. Jamel?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and this is located in the CPD zoning district within the recently approved Innovation District subdivision, the northern portion of the Scarborough Downs redevelopment project. So the applicant's in for a sketch plan, and staff would just like to point out that the, you know, sketch plan is an opportunity for a high-level discussion between the board and the applicant that sort of sets the table for formal site plan submission in the future. So the applicant's proposing a 24,420-square-foot warehouse and office building located on Lot 28 within the Innovation District on the corner of Innovation Way and an unnamed private drive. This lot has been identified as a front lot in the district's regulating plan, and the board should also consider the unique location of the lot within the project as it is, adjacent to the Innovation Way and Center Street intersection, which will become a corridor into the heart of the Downs project. So one of the key issues, as you went through the notes, that staff recommends to the board, that the board discussed with the applicant, is access management. So understanding that the proposed access will be along the secondary frontage off the, along the private drive, as identified in the regulating plan that was approved during the master planning process, staff has recommended that the applicant consider eliminating a curb cut and provide one full access driveway into the site. Staff has also recommended that the applicant narrow down the proposed curb cuts as much as feasible, as this would reduce the amount of impervious surface and increase pedestrian safety. So the applicant and the board should be sure to discuss these issues tonight. Staff would also like to note that the regulating plan, regulating plan requires a robust streetscape buffer along the Innovation Way frontage, and given the prominence of the project in relation to the Downs project, staff has recommended that the applicant provide a robust planting and landscaping program, also within the southwesterly corner along Innovation Way, as this would help to soften the view of the proposed parking area and building as seen from the square or four-way intersection. The applicant's also proposing to provide 18 parking spaces instead of the required 55. So the zoning ordinance does allow the board to reduce the amount of parking on a site where it is determined that the use can be occupied with fewer spaces, so the board should provide direction to the applicant on whether you guys are comfortable with the amount of proposed parking. And finally, the staff has recommended the applicant provide a sidewalk along the entire frontage of the private drive, given that the Innovation District was designed to be pedestrian-friendly. Now, this would allow the public and employees along this drive to easily connect to the public space provided at the four-way intersection adjacent to the project. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. Dan, would you like to introduce yourself on the project and clearly speak to some of the main big points here, and hopefully, we'll give you enough guidance as you go forward in this.
Great, thank you. Dan Bacon here from M&amp;R Holdings and the Scarborough Downs team. We're really pleased to report, overall, there's a lot of interest in the Innovation District, so we're excited about that level of interest. We presented Score Builders, a user, end-user across the street at one of your last meetings, and are really excited to be introducing the AV Tech Technic Site Plan this evening. AV Technic is an audio/video kind of event specialist-type use. Daniel Willis is here, the president of AV Tech, who's going to introduce himself and talk in more detail about what they do and why they're excited about this site and how the site and its program works well for them. So we think this is a great user and a great location on this prominent corner at the center of the Innovation District, and plan to come back to you at site plan with some land, some architecturals that illustrate and show how this building fits into the corner. As Jamel indicated, there is interest in making sure it's attractive on this corner and represents the corner well. As the board likely remembers from your subdivision review process, the development is actually providing enhanced landscaping on all four corners of this four-way intersection, so that landscaping will do a lot of kind of the robust landscaping treatment that staff commented on. A landscaping plan will be generated at your site plan submission to correspond with that, to kind of complement that. So that'll be coming back to you with a more formal submission. Before I turn it over to Daniel, I did want to kind of comment on the importance of the shared driveways to this end user. As the board likely remembers, through the subdivision process, Innovation Way is the primary public street that provides access to all the lots within the Innovation District, and then there's these shared driveways that aren't streets, they're essentially easements that go across, could be up to six lots, but in many cases, it'll be less. And these shared driveways were intentionally proposed as private so that the lot owners have a bit more flexibility in terms of access, the number of curb cuts, and how these driveways integrate with kind of circulation and truck traffic in their parking lots. So we believe this design is kind of balancing those competing interests, and it's a pretty important design consideration, I know, for AV Technic to have some access controls, but also some flexibility around the number of curb cuts to provide for access for visitors, employees that go to the front of the building, and then provide for truck circulation and backing towards the rear of the site. I know that's going to be true for other end-users that come along and are using their shared driveways. So just wanted to remind the board of that kind of design consideration and how this, these are a good bit different than a public street where access management's critical. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel to talk about his business and operations and how that's informed this site plan, and then Nancy's going to get into more details around the specifics of the site plan, and then open up for questions by the board.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help to date on all this and working through us. It's a, it's a pretty cool project. We're excited to be a part of it. I thought I'd speak sort of informally about, about AV Technic, about what we do and sort of how we've gotten here to date, in hopes to help you understand our business and why this is important to us. My name's Daniel Willis. I started AV Technic in 2004 after spending many years on the road working for Sony Records as a. as a touring rock and roll sound engineer and tour manager. So lived an exciting life for a while. I was originally born here in Portland, actually bought my first home in Scarborough and lived here for many years. And also had my business located in the industrial park in what's now the Welch signage building in the industrial park for some time before I bought a building in South Portland on Darling I started AV Technic as a one-person operation because I wanted to come back to Maine and continue to do the work that I do, which is providing technical services for events of all kinds. At that time, I started mostly as an audio company and we have since expanded into providing sound, lighting, rigging, drapery, video production services, you name it, for any type of event from a two-person web conference to a 20,000-person rock concert. We are not associated with the Rock Row project, so I know there's lots of issues there. So no relationship. That being said, I started the business because, A, it's something that I've always done, something that I've been very passionate about. And when I moved back to Maine, I wanted to start a reality for me that could provide for a family and a way that I could give back to the community, be involved in the community. It's a very personal business in that we work very closely with clients as an extension, really, of their team to help them communicate on many levels, whether it be artistry or trying to communicate to a team that could be continents away. And so part of that was very much about doing something differently, doing something better, doing something that meant, meant something to me. And around 2009, I hired my first set of employees, in which we moved over to the Welch Building in Scarborough. And continued then to expand that, that relationship to folks that wanted to be part of this, this business, that helps provide people a way to communicate effectively and to also, again, be part of something bigger, I guess. We're very close with our clients because it's a real extension, it's a real partnership that is required to do what we do well. Bringing staff on was very personal to me because I wanted to be able to provide them and their families an opportunity to do what they love to do in what's very much a niche market. You know, we're not a company that people drive down the road and say, "We need that." You know, it's something very specific. And so providing a company that not only are we doing something for companies large and small, I also wanted to create an environment internally where folks that were passionate about this business, as much as I was, could come, make a living, and do something that means a lot to them. Since AV Technic has grown, I mean, we're still a very small company in that we only have 10 employees, but we are serving a client base from, you know, WEX, IDEXX, Hannaford Brothers, Bath Iron Works, University of New England, Bates, Bowden, Colby. We travel mostly around, we travel mostly, we're mostly in Maine, but we travel all over New England and even beyond for certain clients. You know, this past weekend, we just finished up a large music series that we do up at LL Bean for their, their summer concert series. We christen the ships at Bath Iron Works. We're in the middle of convocation orientation season for, for many of the colleges mentioned. And, you know, we just helped WEX last week. We work with them weekly to provide a global communication with our streaming services. The building on Darling Avenue has worked out very well, except for we've expanded, it's about 10,000 square feet. The majority of our business is warehouse. It does house a lot of this equipment that people hire us to provide. Every service that we provide is custom tailored for the job. There's really no two services that are the same. And again, as I had said from the beginning, this sense of trust, this sense of community, this sense of being an extension of these businesses is really what we do. Yes, we provide audiovisual services, but yes, they're relying on us to make sure that we can communicate whatever their message may be, whether it be a rock concert or it be a global communication, or you name it. One of the really things, one of the things that attracted me so heavily about the Downs was that sense of community that's being created here. I've always believed in being part of something, being part of the community. And my guys coming to work and feeling like they can be proud of where they work, be proud of the folks they work with, and be proud of what and how they do it. And the building on Darling Avenue has been wonderful, but it's too small. We've outgrown it. We only have one loading dock. Access is difficult. Parking is, is, is limited mostly from our, from a trucking and fleet standpoint. Our aisles are three feet wide in our warehouse, which is really tight. So in our search for finding something better, if you will, the Downs project came about and seemed like the perfect opportunity for us to be part of this community. These, again, these tree-lined streets, I never thought I'd be starting from scratch like this, but the thought of providing, first and foremost, my team of guys who work sometimes 18-hour days, which is a normal show day, three, four days in a row, a place that they can come and be proud of. They come to work and they love it. They feel good, they have the tools they need to work well because they work very hard. And so having a place that is internally efficient and effective and allows them to do their job well is a requirement for me as their fearless leader, if you will. It's really important that they can come and feel good about that because if we can't do it right internally, forget about taking care of all of these clients externally. So this Downs project is great because it will provide the ability to define a reality for us that is very conducive to what and how we do what we do. The building, as you kind of see in this plan, is designed in such a way that, again, we, even though we're doing very large-scale events, we have a small staff. Like I said, currently we have 10 employees, plus me, 11. There probably is a reality to add a couple more, but we run a pretty tight operation. Again, we keep it to the point where we're providing services on a very personal level. So the idea here is, is that from the front of the building, as you see, we are planning very much so to create, which you haven't seen yet, a very attractive, we're planning to put a lot of money into the aesthetics of this building. Again, not because necessarily we have tons and tons of clients coming to our facility, but because I want to make sure when my guys and my team drive in every day, they feel proud about where they are working. And, and so we're gonna provide a very attractive front entrance. We're gonna wrap the building around the corner as you come in from the side here to make sure aesthetically it's, it's attractive, not only for my team, but also for folks driving in the different directions. It was important to me that we kept that separate from the loading area, which is, as you can see, more towards the, the back portion, the northern portion, I guess, if you will, of the, of the lot, for a couple reasons. One is because I wanted there to be a separation. I wanted there to be an environment where they could come to a place that looked and felt, felt really nice, but also we are, we do, we do truck. So there has to be that, that loading access. And so the ability to have the, the access and to get in semis, which is not a regular, it's more 26-foot trucks on a regular basis, but being able to get semis, to be able to get turned around and backed in safely without congestion of parking, without having to navigate tighter, tighter lots, was really one of the driving factors in trying to outline sort of the flow of the building. We've incorporated a interior loading dock, so the trucks will actually back into the building fully, which is sort of, I can't, I don't have my pointer with me, but sort of that center, that center-side squared-off portion. And the idea behind that is, again, as I said, you know, an 18-hour day is a typical show day for us. So the thought of having to load trucks on a February morning at 2:00 a.m. to keep the equipment and the staff safe, we can now back trucks in the night before, load what results in millions of dollars of equipment into these trucks and keep them in a safe, secure, climate-controlled situation. And on the reverse side, of course, at the end of a long day, these guys can back their truck into the, and they can go, they can go home safely, whereas having to stay for another hour to unload these, these trucks. So the design of that interior bay is very much in regards to that. It's not completely depicted here, but again, the location of that bay, because it's in sort of, as you see, sort of the middle or the back third or so of the building, is that the warehouse is sort of designed as a U-shape around that loading bay. Because of what we do, we have, I'd like to say hundreds of thousands of pieces and parts that make up every single show that we do. And so we have to pick pieces and parts for every show independently and they could be located in many different ways. So the idea between, behind the sort of centralized loading area is that we're not having to, we can lay out the warehouse in such a way that we can manage the flow of gear and the types that need to go and how it gets packaged, and then not having to be pushing things all the way to the back end of the warehouse, you know, the far end. So it gives us a little bit more of a centralized spot to, to, to work to. So, so that's sort of, again, conceptually, that was sort of the, and again, Nancy, I think we'll, we'll talk a little bit more technically about it, but that's sort of the concept of why the plan, as it's been outlined, sort of has come about. And so I thought maybe that would be helpful anyways to try to give you an understanding about who we are and what we do and what we're looking for as part of this sketch plan, really.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well, Daniel and Dan have done a great job of introducing and discussing the project, so I'll be brief in my presentation. I'm Nancy St. Clair with St. Clair Associates. I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit more in detail about some of the specifics on the site itself. As has been mentioned, we're on Lot 28 of the Innovation District. And this 1.63 acre site is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Innovation Way. And you can see on the little bit, on the lower end of that rendering where Center Street intersects Innovation Way. As Dan had mentioned, the access drive that comes up along the westerly side of the site is a private access drive that's shared amongst the lots. And that is the point of access for the two driveways that are proposed as part of this site. As Daniel had mentioned, the prominence and the location of the office and employee portion of the site is on the southerly end of the building. That is the upgraded facade, that is the, that's correct. In that area there is where, you won't, you haven't seen it yet, but you will be pleasantly surprised when you do see the building and its elevations for that. If you look closely at the building, roughly in the location of that little white projection on what would be the easterly side of the building, that's actually a patio off a proposed kitchen area within the office space. So that kind of defines sort of the delineation point of the office space on the southerly end. And then from the northerly portion of the building, that's all that U-shaped internal warehouse area that Daniel had described. What does make this building a little bit unique is we do have an interior dock area. And as Daniel mentioned, that's climate-controlled and allows the trucks to be loaded and unloaded within the building. The area that's sort of shown in white, if you will, on that plan just outside of that dock area, is actually a concrete slab that's proposed. The concrete in front of the dock area itself ramps down into that dock location. In is for truck maneuvering in and out of the building. The remaining area above that on the northerly end is actually for the fleet parking. There are three AV Technic trucks that will park there. That's their, their home at night, once they're emptied out. So that provides for an opportunity for the, sort of the truck and the service area on the site. If you look closely behind the building, you'll also see we do have a dumpster. The dumpster has been placed behind the building to help shield that. We do understand that as part of the site plan review requirements, that will be a screened and fenced-in area as well for that. So one of the comments that was made was with regard to sort of the width of the curb cut in that particular location. And as we've described, there are a few things going on in that area that do require that we have sufficient maneuvering areas for the different vehicles that are using that for that. We certainly, in response to staff comments, will take a look to see if we can tighten that up a bit, but we do need to have that for proper maneuvering and circulation in the dock area itself. As Daniel mentioned, one of the other key aspects for the site is provision for a separated entrance to allow his employees to come in and out and the occasional visitor to access without coming through the dock area itself. So that is the reasoning behind the entrance that is actually a little bit closer around the southerly side of the site. As Dan mentioned, there is a provision for the 10-foot landscape strip along the frontage of the property on Innovation Way, and we certainly do understand, but as part of a site plan review package, you will be receiving a detailed landscape plan that addresses that, as well as other site landscaping features to meet the requirements for site plan review. With the treatment of the building architecturally, we want to make sure that the building is seen, parking is screened, but we want to make sure that there's a healthy balance between that, as this is going to be for Daniel, a showcase building for him. So we'd like to obviously make sure that you folks get a chance to see those elevations as part of that. But with that, I think the site plan package itself will be enlightening, if you will, for that. So if you recall from going through with the ordinance, the, excuse me, the subdivision review for the Innovation District, there were provisions that were made as part of that sort of master plan for the Innovation District, such that these lots are sort of pre-designed, if you will. There are provisions for utility connections for sewer for this lot. There are also provisions for storm drain connections for this lot as well. The connection point is actually sort of at the midpoint on the southerly end of the site along the Innovation Way frontage. That allows a piped connection into the drainage system for the Innovation District. Runoff from this site will actually be piped down along Innovation Way towards the west and be part of the stormwater treatment facilities in Pond One, which is under construction right now in the Innovation District. So as part of that, there are sort of impervious coverage limits that are established for the lots within the subdivision and provided that you are in accordance with those limits, that you don't exceed them, there's nothing else to do on the site for stormwater management other than to physically connect the drainage system for the lot into the municipal or master system. And so in this case, we are well below the limitations on that. We're at 71% impervious on the site right now, and that does include the construction of the accessway over the westerly side of the site. So we're well below the threshold and so we would just, from a stormwater standpoint, be tying in that way. We would be connecting into the service stubs that are provided for the lot. We will be providing you folks with a lighting plan as part of the site plan application package, which will include the photometrics, which is one of the items that was raised as a staff comment. So the other thing that I just wanted to touch on briefly is parking. We are proposing 18 parking spaces plus an additional three fleet parking spaces for the trucks for AV Technic. And so with that, we are below what mathematically would be calculated for a building of this size for the office component and the warehouse component. That's calculated out at 55 parking spaces. So as part of our package for you, we did provide an exhibit that showed how, if there were a different tenant occupying this building, how that parking might show up. And I don't know, Jamel, if you have it. So, that is the exhibit that was prepared for you folks to see how 55 parking spaces might look on that site. The building's the same, the building has not moved. In order to achieve that, basically, actually, for comparison, what I'll do is I'll leave this out as well. So, for comparison, along the frontage, along Innovation Way, the parking orientation is generally the same. The difference is that there are a few more parking spaces on the southwest corner of the site. Along the westerly side of the building, if you look on the colored rendering here, the large green space that is adjacent to the building would now become parking for that. And then, the area that is behind the building that is now for, or beside the rear of the building, behind the docks, the area that is now for the fleet parking for larger vehicles would be converted to a typical-sized parking space, and the dumpster would be relocated. In doing that, that changes sort of the circulation pattern in the loading area, and in order to achieve that number of parking spaces, we would have to eliminate that second curb cut. Now, as you heard Daniel speak, the segregation between the employee and visitor parking and his loading area is very important for his function on his building and his design and vision for this site. An alternate user, someone who had more of a need for that level of parking, that would not be something that would be provided as part of that. So, that's a comparison plan that we wanted to present to you folks. We do know that as part of the process, you would have to weigh in on our request to have fewer than the ordinance-required parking spaces. So, we wanted to get this out and have it as part of our sketch plan discussion with you. We've talked on a few different things tonight, so we're here, all of us, to answer any questions that you folks may have, and we're definitely looking for input as we move forward and prepare our site plan package.
Thank you, Nancy. We do have an opportunity tonight for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to get up and speak on this topic, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Rachel, would you like to start off?
Sure. I'm really looking forward to seeing the architectural designs. I think this is a very exciting project, and I really appreciate your approach to your work and, and to your staff. I think as a longtime union organizer, we wouldn't have had as many members as we did if a lot of the employers had taken the same sort of approach as you do. I do have, though, a couple of questions that I, I guess are kind of foundational. One of the things that we talked about in terms of the development of these lots, the front lots, is that they would be relatively close to the street. That was, that was the assumption. And that if there were parking spaces, or that in general, the parking spaces would be to the side or the back, that that was kind of the desired thing, and especially on these four corners. If you've had a chance to look at the square builders that, that came before us, you, you see that it's, the building is, is, is right there. It is, it is visual, the parking is to the rear. Could you tell me, you know, why you chose this sort of parking configuration with the parking in front of this building? For the cost, understand that, that you wanted a separation be, in a sense, between the staff parking and the customer parking, but why in front? And then, as you go along in general, I think you're going to have to take a look and tell me where your snow, snow storage is going to be.
To answer your first question, with regard to placement of the building, the option to try to slide the building forward really pushes everybody sort of along that side area of the site. And as you come forward, you push the dock forward. And so, what happens is it kind of gets pinched. You really can't get the number of parking spaces that you would want to have without being right up against the dock. So, as you come forward on the site, for us, it felt really much cleaner and better for placement of the building if we did have some of the parking in front of the building, recognizing that that's the nicer architectural treatment, et cetera. So, if you sort of move it, I think one of the comments was to move the building to the southwest corner of the property and kind of set it right on that intersection. The dock location, the, the segregation with the employees to have them have a nice spot, you really kind of lose all of those amenities, and it forces everything on the backside of the site, which causes the need for more impervious and a difficulty, more difficulty in maneuvering in a dock area if we were to try to do the mirror image of the building.
No, I'm not clear I understand. Let's say why you did not move it further towards the southeast, rather than, in other words, just shift the building forward.
Just south. Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Just south.
Just south.
In doing that, what happens is you end up with the inability to have a green space, as you can see on the side of the building. As you can see with the full build-out plan, parking is right between the access drive and the building. So, when you take away the ability to have, there's a dozen parking spaces right now in front of the building, when you take away that, you have to put those someplace. So, those kind of get crammed in between the edge of the building and the private drive. So, with this program, we do have some parking in front. We have an ample area for a nice green space, not only along the front of the building, but along that side of the building that you see on the plan there that helps to kind of screen and buffer the loading areas, those types of things.
Well, I'm actually not worried about screening the loading areas, simply because I think we are in an industrial area, they are set far enough back. I, I would like you to consider what would happen if you just slid the building towards the street, as the other building right across from it is. Would that free up parking, whether it's staff parking or whatever, in the rear, leaving you still with customer parking along the private access road? Is that something that's, that's possible so that the building, which I, I'm really anticipating is going to be lovely, is a lot more visible from the street without the parking there?
I understand the, the comments and, and the direction that you're going with that, to, to put the parking to the rear of the building, sliding everything forward and sort of picking that up, introduces your employees coming through the back of the building. And as Daniel mentioned, he wants his employees to be coming through that upscale front entrance to the building to, to really, you know, have their, their daily visits to work a positive one. And so, that was something that, that the applicant felt very strongly about, to make sure that everybody, as his employees, come in through that main entrance through the building, separating out the functional needs in the dock area at the rear of the building.
So, the staff parking is to the south and the customer parking is to the west?
There are 18 parking spaces provided. Daniel currently has 10 employees and projects that he would have about five more at full expansion, leaving about three for customer parking. So, it's the employees who will be coming out primarily along the front and the side of the building to access at the front of the building.
If that remains your design, then I'm really going to be looking at a lot, a lot more robust buffering.
Very well.
I like the idea of parking inside the building so that the folks can unload the day before, or load the day before and unload the, the day after. I'm not as worried about the length of the curb cuts because, again, it's industrial and you need to be able to get trucks in.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Roger.
I actually was going to ask the same question that Rachel just asked, but I will wait to see what your next presentation is. I'm not as keen on the robust buffering because I'm expecting the architecture of the building to be very attractive, and I, I think that's, especially on that corner, it's going to be, I'm looking forward to it being very attractive coming into that area, so I'm sure. I assume that it's going to be a berm or something separating the street from the parking area in the front. Something like that?
We haven't finalized grades in that particular area.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that the building is going to be sitting up a little bit higher than the street line itself, and so we can look at what can be done to help screen the, the cars, if you will, but give that nice prominence for the building.
Okay. Are the employees there most of the day, or are they out on the road somewhere?
We have a combination of both. I mean, we're, to a degree, 24/7 these days. So, we all wear many hats, to say the least. So, we're, we're there during the day. I mean, a lot of these jobs require lots of phone calls and emails during normal working hours, so we have staff that's sort of onsite, we have staff that's onsite, we have warehousing staff, but also those folks will also come up into the office and vice versa. So, it's, it's a hard thing to define the event, the event business in, in our industry.
Okay.
A lot of running around, per se, so.
So, so this will be your, your national headquarters when you expand into?
National headquarters, right here in Scarborough, Maine. You've got it. So, yes. And, and as a side point, I don't know if I, if I should continue to speak on this, but the comment of moving the building to, towards the road, totally understand the idea of the parking along the front. Actually, it was one of my desires, believe it or not, although I think our priorities are different, to have parking along the roadways and not against the building, because I wanted my folks that are in their offices to look out their windows and not be looking at cars. So, maybe I shouldn't admit to that, because now I'm pushing it to the street where everybody else has to look at it. But that was part of the, the design, again, is to provide the guy, the folks in the building, you know, not looking at the windshield of a car. And the thought of it is if we push that building towards the road, we sort of lose that front entrance as far as people being able to park and come in through that, versus if they're on the side or the back, they'd have to walk around to access the front of the building, so.
Well, the good news for your employees, when they do look out the window, they'll see an attractive building across the street.
They'll, yeah. Our building will be nicer than theirs.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
Now, we're going to have contact.
I, I do have, I do have another question. Maybe this pertains more to Dan. On the, the private roads, refresh my memory. You know, I recall there's, you know, in the original plans, there were maybe like three or four lots going in on those private roads. Now, what if somebody is in that back lot and they want to walk out to Innovation Way? Are there going to be sidewalks along those private roads?
Yeah, we talked about that during the subdivision process and wanted to wait till site plan so that we knew layouts of lots. In some cases, there's going to be walkways that can connect building to building. In other cases, there won't be. There'll be long stretches of kind of loading docks in, in areas that aren't connected walkways. So, after this, this meeting this evening, we know a number of the end-users that are interested in lots on this private drive, so we're going to kind of take a higher-level view at how to provide some pedestrian accommodations along this private drive. Because, you know, we didn't, we don't know exactly how sites are going to be laid out. And so, now that we are getting your feedback tonight, we have some other end-users that we have a sense for how they're going to be laid out, we can figure out how best to provide some amount of pedestrian movement along the private drive. We know that there aren't kind of coffee shops and breweries planned on these lots. That was one of the conversations around, okay, having good pedestrian access to retailers or restaurants or things that might be here. That might happen on another block. So, I think there's some potential for pedestrian activity, but there's also probably more potential for cars and trucks using these private drives. So, we need to kind of balance where it makes sense to spend a lot of money on walkways and where it makes sense to, you know, work with the site plans.
Well, I, I did notice that they have a walkway going out to Innovation Drive.
They do.
Yeah.
And the plan is to have a, a mailbox and a kiosk for the whole project, so they, they'll have a quick walk to, if they get paper mail, check their paper mail. Okay, so.
Okay, I'm all set. I think it's very exciting.
Thank you, Roger. Rick?
Yeah, I'm glad to see another lot being taken up. This is pretty exciting. Just a couple of things that I'd like you to consider as you're, you're doing your architectural, don't know if you're doing a flat roof or is it going to be a pitched? Do you have a guess on that?
We do, yes.
Flat?
It's, it's, it's pitched, but it's one in, it's quarter, quarter inch.
I need people to speak into the microphone, otherwise the people at home, all of them watching you, can't hear you.
Hard people at home. It's a quarter twelve, yes. It's a quarter of an inch every 12 inches, right? Did I say that right? Yes. So, it's very close to flat, but it is still pitched, yes.
So, when you come back to us with a more detailed plan, could you put where you might, probably not going to put a rooftop unit on that building, so you're probably going to have to put some slab or some sort of carrier unit on a slab for your ventilation and everything, can you make sure that's drawn in here and, and fenced up so that it can't be seen from?
Yeah.
Center Street, I think it is?
Yeah, I can tell you, I think I can fairly, speak fairly confidently. So, the offices will be controlled via VRF.
VRF system?
Yep. And, and so, in that location of that, that unit will be on the, sort of the patio side, that's, I guess, the easter side of, of the building. And then, actually, we're looking, the, the plan currently is to put what we would define as an air-rotation unit, which is actually a completely self-contained unit that resides inside the building 100%. It does have a, a small venting out of the, the roof, but no outdoor elements.
Well, you're going to have to bring in makeup air, so at some point, you're going to have to bring in fresh air.
We'll bring Peter up to the table for this one.
I try.
Hi, Peter O'Boy, it was Barabro. The unit will have, have, it goes right on the outside of the building and brings in air at that location, so that all the venting will be right behind the unit.
Yeah, okay. So, wherever you put the outside units for the VRF, just want to annotate that on the plans and maybe consider keeping it fenced out so it can't be seen or readily, a rock thrown into it or whatever.
Yeah, it's a pretty small unit. It's like two by four, not, not as large as what you'd call it.
24,000 square feet, yeah. Try to get one with a heat recovery on it.
If, if, that, that unit is only for the office space.
The other thing, and I think you've annotated that, is on the, the photometrics will be needed so that we can check on the lighting levels and make sure that there are some ways to control those lights so that they can be dimmed at appropriate times and actually help your electric bill a little bit. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rick. So, I don't have a whole lot to add on to the comments of my colleagues here, just for the sake of playing around with the plan just a little bit at sketch here. How critical is access from that front parking lot to the back trailer area? And I only ask because I, just visually, if you turn the, what looks like a C, if you turn that over, you, it looks to me like you can get a ton more green space right there. I mean, you already have two curb cuts being proposed. What's the purpose of the connectivity from one drive to the other? Because I don't believe many of your clients would drive back to where you're loading trailers. I could be wrong, but I'm just, I'm looking at the impervious surface here and saying, you know, there might be an opportunity here for more of that green space, especially if you're going to request two curb cuts. Again, we're at sketch, so you guys can figure out your best design. I, I will say that I do agree with a lot of staff comments here. That's, that's a really big opening, and I appreciate you saying you're willing to kind of look at the size of that curb cut, see if there's anything more you can do with that.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can just answer your question about sort of severing the front from the rear, I think is what you're, you're looking at for there. If you look at that sort of white box that's by the loading area, there, you'll see the pavement goes right up to the building just south of that concrete pad, and that's actually. pavement goes right up to the building just south of that concrete pad, and that's actually an at-grade overhead door, so that if a customer came and just needed to pick up a small piece of equipment, they could pack their personal vehicle up to that door and come in. So that is why there is a connection there between the two. So we certainly will look at ways to improve the, lessen, if you will, the amount of impervious area on the site, and also to look at ways to try to tighten up those curb cuts for that. We do want to make sure, obviously, we get public safety vehicles in, and that we, you know, have appropriate maneuvering in the dock area and sort of for the pieces of activity that are going on there, but certainly your point is well taken.
Thank you. And, you know.
Can I jump in?
You may.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure the applicant has direction as they prepare their site plan, so the three issues that I noted were the number of curb cuts, the width of them, and the parking amount. Just want to make sure that they, they're, they know what to do next. Sorry about that.
Thank you. My next comment was going to be the parking. So we, we need to, as a board, make sure that we're all set with the proposed 18 spaces versus 55, which is a, it's a large difference. I personally, just for the record, I, I feel like, you know, applicants can best tell us how they believe they're going to use their space, and I know why we have the ordinances written the way they are, but I do feel more comfortable knowing that we have an alternate plan in place if something, this would ever change ownership, there is an ability to get those parking spaces in there if they were ever required. That's where I lean. Anyone else want to weigh in on the parking?
No, I, I agree with you. The, the owner knows what, what he needs, but it's good for us to know that, or another person coming along perhaps 40 or 50 years from now to buy the building, that there are alternatives.
I'm in concurrence.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I could add, and an approach to that is we will be providing you with our proposed site plan that shows the number of parking spaces and the alignment, et cetera, that we're proposing for the site. And then in addition, as part of our package, there would be an exhibit drawing in that that would take this site plan and show in dashed lines where the expanded parking might be. I think that will help with clarity rather than trying to show those dash lines on the site plan itself. So with your permission, that's our approach to that, for that.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah. And then, you know, as, as Jamel has alluded to, you know, clarity between, you know, the number of curb cuts, this board needs to make sure that, you know, they don't come back with a design that has two curb cuts and then we decide to change our mind that they should only have one later on. I think it would be only fair to try to hammer this out a little bit right now. Are we, are we okay with the current two, two-cut design or proposal? Roger?
I, I am, based on what Dan described, how they envisioned this, these private roads being set up. I'd be kind of curious to see what it looks like when they come back. I do agree, though, that they should try and reduce it as much as they possibly can and still make it practical for their, for their business.
Right.
Well said, Roger.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, we have to remember this is a private access drive. We're not looking at curb cuts on a main road, so I think, given it's in an industrial area, a private access road, the two curb cuts are fine if you can scrunch them down a little bit.
Thank you. So I believe that's most of the clarity you'll, you'll need at this point from us. I would just remind this board that we do want to kind of, with this opportunity, we're seeing the first one and two of these lots being developed. While each lot is individual and special to an owner's needs out there, I don't want to see this board take, I'd hate to see us not apply the same standards to everyone else that comes in after this. So I think we should really kind of think long and hard about sidewalk requirements. What's, what's good for one, is it good for another? Because we can't, I, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to say, we're going to require them on this lot and then the lot in behind it, we can all of a sudden waive it. So I think we want to, you know, feel like there should definitely be some consistency here, while there might not be a coffee shop on this private way, the people that work on this private way might want to walk over to Innovation Way to get their coffee. So just keep all of that in mind, that we have, you know, at the start of this very large build-out plan, we kind of have to set the tone for what we expect, and hopefully we can remain consistent. And that way, when the applicant continues to, well, not the applicant, but the developer continues to market these, they're, they're definitely aware, and the, and the people who want to purchase into this area are aware of what the expectation levels are going to be going forward. So just food for thought on that. Rachel?
Yeah, it just occurred to me, is there a trailhead at the end of this private access road?
There is not. The next trailhead is actually further to the west, towards where the pond is being constructed.
I, I think certainly where there is a trailhead at the end of one of these access ways, we need, we need sidewalks, but I take your point about being consistent, otherwise. I would say if, if there is a trailhead, we really do want the sidewalks. I'm not clear how we want to treat them right now.
Yeah, and I, and again, whether it ends up on one side of the road and we just designate it right out of the gate, if it ends up, you know, on both sides, I, you know, we, we should put some, a little bit of thought into how we, we approach that as these, these applications start rolling in. Roger?
This, this doesn't pertain to sidewalks, but just as a, a suggestion, in the future, this, this is more for Dan, I think, than, than you, Nancy, is in the future, as we see more of these lots being developed, I, I know from my point of view, it'd be helpful to see the overall.
The running tally of where they are.
Well, the overall layout, just to know exactly where they're being positioned, you know, so.
And I, I do want to kind of pay you back on that. I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to look at the people who are approaching you and taking that 30,000-foot view. We learned from the first application we just had at last meeting, that the position of their driveway, and it might not, you know, on this private way might not be applicable because that one was on a, a public road, but the positioning of a driveway can impact all the other lots, cascading factor all the way down. Might not be as big of an impact on some of these private ways, but we should also keep that in mind. So when you do step back and take that overall view, you know, what we're proposing in each of these, how it does impact the, the lots around them. So appreciate that as well. Roger?
So this again for Dan, so can we assume that every time we have a meeting, you're going to be bringing another one in front of us, another business?
He's going to drop.
We hope so.
With that said, I think we've probably covered most of everything you'll need for this point going forward. We look forward to a resubmission, and just want to say thank you, you know, appreciate your story, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've chosen to come back to Scarborough for the, your business, and thank you very much. Good luck, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We're going to do a five-minute recess before we get to our last item of the evening. We'll, we'll recess and be back shortly. We're going to do a five-minute recess before we get to our last item of the evening. We'll, we'll recess and be back shortly. Thank you, everyone, welcome back. Our next item tonight is Ballantine Development LLC requests a site plan review for lots 128A and 128B, North Village, assessor's map RO 73, lot 21A. Jamel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this project is located in the TND zoning district, the northern portion of the approved Eastern Village subdivision. The applicant was last before you all in July. Just as a reminder, the applicant's proposing to construct five multifamily residential buildings consisting of 84 apartments, served by a public street. The proposal also includes numerous garages, a community building, dog park, nature trails, and a new public street with sidewalks on both sides. So as previously noted, back in July, the zoning standards do require sidewalks to be connected to pedestrian amenities in any abutting neighborhoods. So to this end, the applicant is in the proc, process of completing a concept design for a sidewalk along Ward Street to connect the Eastern Village with the municipal campus. Also, as requested, the applicant noted that they updated the building designs, so the applicant should be sure to discuss these modifications, and the board should be sure to provide feedback on the proposed designs. Staff would like to point out that the proposed development is located within Phase Eight of the approved Eastern Village subdivision, so staff recommends that the applicant provide the board with an update on the approved phasing plan, and if this project is to be constructed and occupied prior to other phases within the project. And the applicant has also noted that they're in the process of conducting a traffic analysis for the project and will provide this with future submissions to the board. And there were numerous letters from the public, thank you, and those have been received and distributed to the board this evening. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. Kerry?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kerry Anderson, representing Ballantine Development, and we are here again. As Jamel has just mentioned, since July, we made changes to the architecture to address some of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. In addition to that, we have received our federal NERPA permit, and we should receive our state permit any day now. We have met with fire department and public safety and taken any of the concerns that they have into account, made changes to the plan. And in addition to that, we have looked at some of the aspects of what the staff had asked us to make for changes with respect to the right-of-way going down through the, the neighborhood from 20 feet to the 22 feet. We are proposing sidewalks on both sides. We have changed the parking arrangement up around Building Four so that we could have a park area between the sidewalk and the parking. And we looked at the area down around Building Two, which was asked of us at the last meeting, and we didn't really see a way to change that, to make any appreciable change. change to what you see today with respect to parking, distance from the building, and whatnot. And with that, I've seen the comments from the public. I'm happy to address those when you want to, with any issues there. With that, I guess I would ask to see what the board would like to talk about.
Sure. I think before you step away, can you do an architectural overview for the board? I know that's one area of concern that's been brought up to the public and through the membership itself.
Sure. With me tonight is Sean McGilvery, who is the architect for North Village. He is not the architect of record for South Village, so this is a different architect on this particular project here. Also here tonight is Caleb Barasa. Steve Bushey could not be here. Caleb Barasa is here to answer any engineering questions. We have a thumb drive. Can we use that to... Okay.
Sean McGilvery, IKM Architects. So looking at the perspective you have up here on the screen, we've taken some steps here to address concerns and comments regarding the massing along with the fenestration on the buildings, trim, and casing. What we've done as a first step with the massing is, on particularly the Buildings Two and Four, which are on the left-hand side, we've added a layover gable to break up the long facade along the town road. In addition, we've looked at creating a podium, we'll call it, as the ground floor by adding trim just above the first-floor windows, which gives it a different appearance from a three-story structure. We're trying to enlarge the trim to set it off from the rest of it, so we have a two-over-one configuration, is what we're looking at. In addition to that, we can look at some detail of the exteriors of the buildings and what we've added to those to address the concerns about the size of the facade and the comparison to South Village. This is quite different than South Village, and we'll get into showing the difference between these two so you can better understand what we're proposing here today. Get the elevations?
Yes.
All right. If we can open up the larger file. If you can scroll down to the elevations. So for comparison here... So Building One here, Building One, we've, as I've mentioned, we've added the banding above, it's a banding of trim above the first-floor windows. And also, we've adjusted the gable end, so it has a full pediment. And in addition to that, we've offset the actual siding in the gable end to give it a different appearance from the rest of the body. So we're making these moves to sort of break down the overall massing. Building One is the simplest of them all, but it's also the smallest in footprint. Later on, I'll show you the cornice detail on this, but Building One, from what you've seen before to now, the biggest difference I've mentioned. And then the entryway has been widened to give it a better stance in the front as you pull up to the front, the south elevation from the parking lot. If we can go on to Buildings Two and Four, those have a little bit more of a difference we can see. So on Buildings Two and Four, looking at this, and here in the comments and concerns, on the street face, we've added what's referred to as a layover gable on the roof. And then from there, we've continued trim down all the way to the ground on either side, so we've broken this up into thirds. Also, once again, attacking the massing, saying, you know, how can we make this more visually interesting? The balconies, we've seen, you have seen before, the cornice has been updated, and we'll get into that in a little bit. And then the grouping of the windows, this is on the north side, but we also looked at that. There was, you know, quite a bit of windows in a row. We looked at it and said, you know, yes, we can make this a little more interesting. Let's group a few of the windows together. That's on the backside of the building, so you'd be in the woods to see that for the most part. On the street side, though, it's got the biggest change with the widened entry and the gable layover. If we go on to Three and Five, rather... Three and Five, same treatment we've talked about. And this one actually reduced in footprint. We made some modifications to the layout on the one-bedrooms and the two-bedroom units. So it's smaller than you originally had seen by, I believe, twelve feet in length and six feet in front to back. Beyond that, you know, the changes we've discussed so far, adding the couplers to the roof, those are the big ones on Three and Five. At this scale, you're not going to notice the cornice, but that's the next piece I'd like to discuss, which we can flip to now. Is that the rest of it, or is there another?
Yes, right there. Perfect. Thank you.
So looking at this, this is roughly what we would see at South Village for comparison. So we wanted to give you a side-by-side, since a lot of the comments where we're comparing this to South Village. Our corner boards are wider than what is at South Village currently, it's two inches wider. The water table would be the same, proportionally that works. We're adding the banding above the first-floor windows. The window trim itself is going to have a brick mold on it and also be wider than what's currently installed at South Village. So we're talking about at least an inch to an inch and a half wider there. And on the first-floor level, there will be a cap trim. So if we go on to the next slide here, we can see the difference. So this is what we're proposing at North Village. So you can see right away, it's quite a bit more trim. We've taken the first-floor level and treated it different than the rest, so everything gets the brick mold that's enlarged there on the lower right-hand side. The first floor gets a cap trim to give it a nice shadow line. And then on the corner boards, we discussed being larger. And all of the entablature, cornice, and rake are multi-piece and done to classic proportions for this size building. So we're talking about an overall entablature that I believe is about two foot six, whereas it was a foot less on South Village. So it's quite a different look. It's, you know, between the rendering, it's sketch rendering, so it's hard to say, you know, this is what it's going to be. But this is actual drawing, so you can look at this and say, oh, okay, this is what we're going to see, and this is why it's different. And if we went back to the previous South Village comparison, you can see it's a lot thinner. So we're not attacking it from that way. We're saying this is going to be, is going to be a lot more detail to this building, these buildings. That concludes the items that we had addressed as part of the comments and concerns to architectural. I think at this point, do we open up to comment at this point? Carrie? You have anything else to add?
No, I guess the only thing I'd say is I was happy with the architecture prior. Again, it's a federal style, and I like federal style. This certainly is an enhancement, significant enhancement.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, we do have opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to speak, we're going to ask that you limit your comments to four minutes, please. I do a little courtesy tap when you've got thirty seconds to go, and that means wind it down for us. What you have to do is just step up, state your name, and then let us know what it is you're thinking. Appreciate it. And if we could try to limit comments to the plans that we're looking at, it'd be appreciated.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I'm not going to check my email. I'm just going to start the timer.
You may do that if you want to. My name is Natalie Burns. I'm an attorney at Jensen Baird Gardner &amp; Henry, and I'm here tonight representing Nancy Pack and Jim Marshall, who live at Seven Inspiration Drive. Their property is directly south of the proposal. Most of my comments, you can look at the landscaping plan, which is C6. And if you were looking at that, well, it's not highlighted on yours, but you can see where Inspiration Drive is, and they're the second one in from Ballantine. I'm going to start by talking about Section Seven of the zoning ordinance, which applies to this project because of the multiplex aspect of it. Section seven, point B, point seven, requires inviting public spaces exhibiting human elements and scale. Subsection B eight requires a landscape program that illustrates the proposed aesthetic treatment of space, roads, paths, service, and parking areas. The landscaping plan shows landscaping along the street, near some of the buildings and around some of the parking areas. Doesn't show any landscaping at the property lines, which obviously is of great concern to my clients and other residents of the single-family homes that abut this proposal. Because the density of the project is so much higher than that of the single-family homes abutting it, the planting plan should be, a term that I've heard this board use several times tonight, much more robust than it is. And certainly, there should be plantings along the single-family residences, all of them. I think right now, the only one that has any significant amount of buffering is the one on Ballantine Drive. And honestly, that's there because otherwise, they'd be directly adjacent to the parking lot. So obviously, you would want a buffer there. The buffer can consist not just of planting, but it also can include fencing under your ordinance. Possibly, a berm could be considered, which would certainly help somewhat with noise that's going to come from the parking areas. A project that has higher density is supposed to use its residual open space for active or passive recreation under Section seven, B ten. The only amenity that I've been able to identify on the plan, although perhaps I'm missing something, is the dog park. Certainly, a dog park is a nice amenity, but it's limited as to its users. We did not see other plans for active and passive recreation use, although I know there's been some discussion about trail connections. The remainder of the open space appears to be wetlands, which are not usable for either active or passive recreation. They are required to be kept largely open because they're wetlands. The TND standards in Section sixteen, A, subsection B two require a minimum of ten to twenty percent active or passive recreation area. And I was not able to determine how that was met on the plans that I reviewed. Under the site plan requirements, we understand that a traffic study is underway and will be presented to the board at a future meeting. But I'm sure this board can appreciate that the neighbors are particularly concerned about the impact of eighty-four new units on the intersections that are going to be impacted, particularly as some of those intersections are already at Level of Service D or below Level of Service D. The design and layout of the parking areas under the site plan ordinance are supposed to complement, sorry, complement adjacent buildings to the site. As I mentioned before, there's not much screening around there. The plan is supposed to use buffering to minimize adverse impacts or nuisances on the site or from adjacent areas. We don't see the standards met under the current plan and configuration. Buffers should be used to shield structures and uses from the view of abutting properties. I discussed that already. And then, as far as the architecture is concerned, it should follow traditional New England building forms, but it also should be complementary of what adjoins it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It was, excuse me, can we just clarify?
Yes.
Who are you representing in this?
Nancy Pack and Jim Marshall.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Marshall. I live at Seven Inspiration Drive, and I'm one of the abutters to this property. And I just want to start out by saying that we moved to Eastern Village because of the design standard and the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And what has been created is a community of homes that are complementary to one another. And it's made, I think, just a really special community here in Scarborough. This creates a certain fabric that is one which enhances our quality of life and enhances that neighborhood feeling. It also enhances, frankly, home values as well. And I really worry that Northern Village would detract from the community feeling because it doesn't live up to the same design standard that was created in the community at large. The three-story aspect of this development may be up to the code or to whatever code the town has as far as building height, but I know that our house is two stories tall and all the other buildings that I know of, I can't think of a three-story building in our development as well. We'll be able to see this from our patio in the back of our house. And I would, you know, I think at the very least, there needs to be a lot more in terms of buffering and sort of isolation. The elevation that was shown by the architect faces the street, from my understanding. We're not looking at the street. We're looking at the backs of those buildings behind us. And I would also like to just look at some of the scale of the property. You know, these are buildings which, perhaps, some of them do have some design elements, but I feel like it's, they are still quite box-like in the way that they were constructed. And finally, the massing of eighty-four units in that space behind us, it just seems like a very, very high number of buildings to also, or units to put in, you know, again, right, literally, in my backyard. So I just would like to see, you know, again, buffering, something that adheres more. I mean, it may be a simple federal style, but really, it doesn't look anything like the buildings. I have a federal-style house. These buildings do not complement the style or the design of my house. So I'd just like to see something that's more in tune with that, and at the very least, some more robust buffering between my property line and what I'm seeing in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Carolyn Inglis, and I live at Four Traditional Street. We were initially drawn to Eastern Village, partly because our daughter lives there, and she wanted us to be here as well, which in and of itself was fairly amazing. We were drawn also by the variety of houses, by the gardens, by the care, by the neighbors, the sidewalks, and a feeling of neighborhood. When we were building our home, we were told that we had to adhere to design standards. And when we asked the developer where we could look at those, he said, "They're right up here," which made it difficult for us to proceed without, again and again, getting his okay. Clearly, the standards, however, have not been applied to Southern Village. Aesthetically barren, and we've heard it called barracks, or institutional housing. They have no buffering, no landscaping, no personality, and certainly, very high density. Two houses adjacent to South Village... Two houses adjacent to South Village, their front doors actually face these buildings. They used to have open space, which I think could have been helped partially by having those buildings two stories high rather than three. Southern, South Village looms, and it looms large. When we have friends or family come to visit, they say, "What a great place, but what is that?" We've come to find that the developer did not develop and build the plans that the planning board approved. He took buildings out, he changed things, which I find appalling and an insult to all of you, as well as an insult to the residents of Eastern Village. Lessons learned. If he can't handle a South Village, how on earth is he going to handle eighty-four apartments in North Village? Will he build the design that you approve? Who knows? I have to say, he's leaving many things unfinished in Eastern Village itself. He's abutting Eastern Village with two sets of huge, overpowering apartment complexes. My issues aren't with the apartments themselves. Instead, I have cause to pause because they are so high so that he can have more apartments, so he can collect more rents for his retirement, as he has said. But I ask, when he's reneged on myriad other promises and assurances, why trust him now? Thank you.
My name is Rick Hirschman. I live at eight Inspiration Drive in Eastern Village. The architecture of the houses in Eastern Village is striking, incredible examples of fine detail. People who encounter in Eastern Village for the first time are amazed. One planning board member at your July meeting complimented Carrie and said that he pays attention to detail. I'm going to skip forward because it didn't realize that there were going to be some new plans here. But the architecture, as we all know, in South Village is atrocious. The architecture in Eastern Village has a high degree of detail. The architecture in South Village doesn't even meet the definition of federal. If you look up the, if you go to Google and look up "federal architecture," you won't find anything that looks like Southern Village or South Village. And you've also heard them called barracks. I took pictures of all of the white houses that were near the center part of Eastern Village, so you can get a comparison, because at the last meeting, some people had not seen South Village. And I wanted to show you the comparison between the two. It isn't, some of these, some of these new design elements look a little bit nicer, but they're still looming, and they're still big buildings. My mother, my in-laws built a, built a house, and my mother-in-law had not seen the back of the house because of the way that it approached, it was on the water. She asked me what it looked like. Well, we're going to be looking at the back of this, of all of these buildings. I think the backs of the buildings need to look as good, nice as the front of the buildings. At the July first meeting, Carrie admitted that the buildings in South Village were, and I quote, I went back to listen to the tape today, "not as good as they could look." And so I don't know whether there's any solution there or not, but they certainly don't look good. There's a great disparity between what the residents of Eastern Village have to do and what Carrie Anderson himself does not follow. On the third page there, there's a picture of the air conditioning units in South Village. Those are, those are, have to be concealed in Eastern Village. And Carrie, by Carrie's own design, those are, those virtually cannot be concealed in the locations that they are. And they're behind every building, and when you drive in from Eastern Road, that's the first thing you see, the air conditioning units. So he's not following his own recommendations. Because of the need, apartments in Scarborough are probably all going to be rented out, regardless of what they look like. But, and the taxes on the buildings are going to be the same. But if the tax appraisals on our houses go down because they're close to ugly buildings, then the town of Scarborough is going to have less tax income because the market value of our houses will go down. So it will have an impact on the town of Scarborough. Every person in this room that has, well, not every person, but everyone who's lived in Eastern Village knows that Carrie has a very difficult time in finishing projects. And he's also said he wants to move to California. I certainly hope that the town of Scarborough has protected itself and its citizens because we don't want another thing like the, the, what is it? The Press Herald had an article on it, on the Legends Development, that went bust. At an Eastern Village neighborhood meeting last fall, a top, one of the topics was North Village. Carrie was at that meeting and, and said that the, the problem, I'm sorry. The problem was that when, what he presented to the people, the residents, at that time, was not what he presented to the planning board. So he comes to you and he says, "I've met with people with my, with the neighborhood." Well, he did meet with the neighborhood, he just didn't tell them, tell us what he submitted to you for his plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm James Inglis. I live at four, four Traditional Street, Eastern Village. I strongly support the need for whatever remediation is possible on South Village in terms of it not being built the way it was promised to be built. I don't know what's possible, but I think that, as long as, as well as completion of all the activities there in terms of landscaping, et cetera, needs to be done. Another thing that needs to be done is completion of all the common areas, the roads, the infrastructure, the utilities, in Eastern Village. That's been delayed forever. The developer makes promises and then doesn't deliver. That needs to be done. Both of those things need to be done before anything is begun at all in a North Village project, however that North Village project turns out to be. Let me talk about a couple of aspects of the, of the, the North Village plan, okay? The basic thing is that the full length of the road there, what is it? Camden, I'm sorry, Camden, Camden. That needs to be completed before any structures are built there. That road needs to be completed at both ends. That needs to be phase one of the project. The reason for that is several. One is safety, okay? In the, in the event of a fire or emergency need, well, construction is going on, on the buildings, okay? It's much quicker to get there via the Ward Street entrance rather than having to go out and around on Commerce and then come in Ballantyne and around. So there's a safety aspect to getting that whole road completed, okay? The other thing is that when people begin to occupy the residence, they will be able to drive in and out of both ways of the area. According to the current plan, phase two, that the end up toward Ward is built sometime in the indefinite future. That's inappropriate. If that's done, then all the access will, for residents, will have to be via Commerce Street and Ballantyne Drive. Again, important to complete that whole road initially before anything is built, okay? Let me talk about parking, okay? I think all aisles in the parking lot should be twenty-five feet, as specified in the town ordinance. There's no reason to decrease them for an exception. People have big vehicles, they buy SUVs, they buy trucks. There's, you know, emergency vehicles. Again, there's a safety issue of being able to fully access in those parking areas. I think a twenty-five-foot aisle is perfectly appropriate, and there's no reason to decrease the size of that. This question about parking for the community center and the dog park, there doesn't seem to be any parking identified for those two common features. If, the question is, if this is supposed to be available, as the developer has stated to Eastern Village and even Southern Village people, they're not all going to walk there, they're going to drive there. And there needs to be parking available for those common facilities, okay? Especially things like bad weather, or snow, and so on. Also, the angled parking that is up in the upper right-hand corner there, it's really inconvenient, it seems kind of jammed in there. Inconvenient in terms of its distance to the closest apartment building. The design for that should be rethought, okay? Turn to the dog park quickly. Dog park too small. Requirements generally for five-foot fences rather than four-foot fences, okay? Water needs to be provided, benches need to be provided, those things need to be specified for. It really should be about three times as large as it is to be a meaningful dog park, okay? Community center needs rethinking. If it's just to serve Northern Village, it's probably too big. If it's supposed to serve the whole area, it should be, you know, made larger, okay? And the nature, let me just, nature path as designed runs right down the construction dirt road that is used by the developer. It's certainly not a nature area, and at six hundred feet, it's hard to even call it a trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Portia Hirschman. I live at eight Inspiration Drive. I've come before this board several times with regard to Eastern Village, and I've always commented on two things. One, the developer has a history of not completing common areas before moving on to the next phase. And second, the commitment to build affordable housing to gain additional density has not been done. Well, tonight is no different. On July first, the developer stood before this board and declared that within a few weeks, his site contractor would be back and get the new entrance and work on Eastern Road, taken care of. To date, nothing has happened. On July first, developer told this board that as soon as South Village apartment buildings were complete and occupied, which they all are, that site grading and landscaping would be completed. Hasn't happened. In fact, up to about ten days ago, the sidewalks in a portion of South Village were indoor/outdoor carpeting, just as a, as a hint. Furthermore, trees required and streets and streetlights that have not been installed or in some cases installed but not connected have not been done. The common areas are not done. The park has not been seeded or graded. People are getting frustrated, very frustrated. You see how many people have shown up tonight. We care. And what's happening is, we have discovered in multiple meetings, we know Angela and Jay and Jamal very well, they've talked to us a lot of times, that the only way to get work completed, to get the paving done, the streetlights and trees, was for us constantly to meet with staff and try to figure out how to make things happen. If you keep issuing permits for new phases to open, work does not get done. And that takes up a lot of our energy and time, it takes up a lot of time and energy for staff. Please, help us and stop doing this. The second issue is affordable housing. Developers have the option to increase density and subdivisions by committing to build affordable housing. And there are a long waiting list for that. Vets, the elderly, new teachers, public professionals, and, and we're looking at the park and the downs. This developer was given thirty-nine additional homes to build thirteen affordable units. When questioned several years ago as to when affordable houses were going to be built, he told the board he couldn't find anyone interested in buying them. When he presented South Village to the board at the preliminary site review, he made a point of saying there would be four affordable units in South Village. There are no such units in South Village. Why? Scarborough residents may not be aware that the town allows developers to opt out of this commitment by quietly paying twenty thousand dollars per unit to a fund managed by the Scarborough Housing Alliance. Now I ask you, what can be built for twenty thousand dollars? What real incentive is there for this housing to be built at all if the bar is set so low? Given that this developer was permitted to build an additional thirty-nine homes in this development, weigh the profit potential of those homes versus the fee. For all the public talk about the desperate need for affordable housing, the fact that it is easy for developers to slip behind the curtain is, should be appalling to the residents of Scarborough. How much is being built? Not much. Eastern Village is the perfect place for affordable housing. It's walkable to schools, to the library, to shoppings, to public transit. It is the perfect location. Why isn't one, at least one of these twelve-unit buildings being allocated to affordable housing? Why? You have a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Norma Weinberg. I live at two Ballantyne Drive. I have a ring doorbell, so I decided to see how many cars go in and out of our neighborhood. The average amount of cars that go by my house every day in a twenty-four-hour period runs from four hundred and thirty-two to five hundred and nineteen home cars. Walkers run anywhere from thirty to fifty-nine. Bikers run anywhere from thirteen to twenty-one. There are no speed limits, traffics in the neighborhood. At night, cars drive a lot more fast, drive faster through the neighborhood because when a car comes in on either side of my house, it takes about ten seconds to get through my doorbell. But you can tell, because cars will make it through in three seconds or five seconds. No speed limits. Please put in speed limits. We were also told, as Portia said, in the July meeting, that things would get done. The new entrance would go in. The new entrance hasn't, wouldn't put in around South Village. We have no landscaping around there. It's very barren-looking, it's very sandy-looking. That needs to be done. Since that's not done, there is also, I walk my dog at night. There's lots of lighting down where I live, there's lots of lighting, I think, up into Traditional. But once you get up into South Village on Federal Way, there's no light. It is pitch black there. The light poles are on, the lights are not lit. I don't understand that. I don't understand how this has gotten past everyone. How did I mention that? Sorry, I got ahead of my notes. Vista Street, which goes down around the pond, one whole section of that has been completed. I think it's Vista to Victorian Street is now totally completed. They don't have, they don't have lighting either. There aren't even, I think there are maybe one pole, concrete pole set up for it, but there's none on the other parts. There's no trees like the rest of the community. It's, it's, again, it's just kind of empty-looking. Eastern Trail goes right by a house within probably a foot of a house. The trail's not done, it's kind of clovery-y, and then it goes out onto the other part of Eastern. But that's not done. Now, now he's working past Victorian Street, still going down on Vista. And there's two new homes in there, and I think two under construction. And yet, it's just, things aren't getting done in the older areas. And I don't understand why, why this keeps happening because it's, it's not finished. And yes, I'm like everyone else here. I bought into this place because it's beautiful, it's charming, it has natural gas, it has city waters, it has all the things I wanted. And yet, I feel for the people that live at the opposite end of me because it's not being taken care of. And it's not things that we, as the homeowners, can do. And it's not things that we, as the homeowners, can do, but it, it goes back to what our builder does. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim Hool, and I'm a resident of Eastern Village at Two Traditional Street. And I'd like to comment on the dog park. Last autumn, when Kerry presented the concept of Northern Village to the Eastern Village homeowners, I have to say, I was very gratified to hear that there would be a dog park in the neighborhood. Because as you know, it's a high-density neighborhood, which means high-density dogs. And now, with the presence of Southern, of South Village, it's even a higher-density dog population. I think every tenant in South Village is required to have at least one dog personally. And there's evidence of the presence of dogs in our neighborhood. We'll walk around and look at the common areas and the homeowner's lawns, but that's the nature of the beast, no pun intended. So I was happy to hear that there's a dog park possibly on the horizon, but as I began to think about it, I have every confidence that Kerry will allow the residents of Eastern Village and South Village to use the dog park for their dogs. But nothing in life is permanent, and eventually, ownership will change, either it will be sold, or Kerry will pass it on to the next generation or whatever. And there is, as far as I know, no proposal that there is a legally binding obligation to continue to allow that dog park to be available to residents of Eastern Village and South Village. So I would urge the planning board, as a precondition to approval of North Village, if that is your decision, that there should be a recorded, legally enforceable right-of-way and use easement running to the residents of Eastern Village and South Village that allows us on a permanent basis to be able to use the dog park for our dogs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Nancy Pack, and I am a resident of Seven Inspiration Drive as part of Eastern Village. A lot of comments have been made already about prior developments, and I just want to reinforce that many of us neighbors of that area have spoken about, you know, the concern around unfinished pieces of the development, and the most recent being South Village. It is very difficult to drive off Black Point Road and go through that back entrance, Eastern Road, and then head towards, you know, the Eastern, the actual Eastern Village development when you have mounds of dirt, unpaved asphalt, uneven surfaces to drive. And I did bring some show and tell, you can just scroll on the iPad to see what I'm talking about, I'm just going to pass that along. That is very difficult to look at daily. It's difficult to see kids walking, young kids walking along that area, they're walking through mounds of dust, and again, piles of brick and other things. And if that is a foreshadowing of what North Village might look like if it actually gets built and finished, that's very concerning. I would not want to have mounds of dirt, gravel, you know, uneven roads, especially if we're going to have roads that may connect the rest, you know, all the residents to the entire development. So my urge is for the board to mandate that the developer finish commitments, and whatever was written in the site plan for South Village to be completed first. Also, there were staff comments, for the staff comments in the last meeting, where comments about the Bessie Square Pond improvements that were not finished, be finished before North Village is started. So I'd add Bessie Square Pond, and South Village improvements, landscaping, everything that was promised to be completed before North Village is even considered to be started. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public? Seeing that, I'm going to close public comment. Now, I would say thank you all for giving us your time and your thoughts on this, appreciate it. And now, we're going to turn it over to the board. Rachel.
Yeah, thank you. Kerry, one of the, one of the comments that was made was that this is Phase Eight in North Village. This seems to me that it is out of the phasing plan. Could you talk about, since I wasn't on the board when this began, I think it would be helpful to get a framework for what the phasing plan that you had looks like, and why you decided to go directly to Phase Eight?
Well, phasing on the project has changed a number of times. It changed as early as, or as late as six months ago. And frankly, it's the demand. We get 400 calls a month. There's a massive housing problem. And for people that have got their house and thinking about where they're going to spend their weekend, and what they're going to barbecue out and everything else like that, they don't have those concerns. But there are people who, on a weekly basis, nightly basis, every weekend, worry about what, where they're going to live. That's the kind of demand that we have, and that's the reason why we decided to move forward with this. We never told anybody anything about this phase, what it was going to be, what it wasn't going to be, or anything like that. But it's the demand, the sheer demand for housing.
Any of these, there was one notation of affordable housing, are any of these going to be affordable?
No.
Are you going to pay any in lieu of?
We don't owe the in lieu on this, we've talked to the town about that. But you know, that's another, if we were proposing affordable housing, we'd be criticized for doing affordable housing. But no, we're not proposing anything in here, and we've talked to the town about that aspect of it. And we will follow through with, with the in lieu fee for the rest of the project, if and when that comes available. We tried to do affordable housing. We tried back in oh, back in 10, 11. We held meetings here at the town, we advertised with the town manager and with planning staff in the paper throughout the town. We didn't have one person show up. It's not as easy as it sounds. They want to put it on somebody else. But, you know, it's not, it's not easy to do, and that's the reason why it's not happening. And imposing fees on developer, like impact fees, I mean, the school impact fee on this project right here, close to $300,000, wipe that away. The sewer impact fee on this project, close to $250,000, wipe that away. If you want affordable housing, I think the town really needs to take a look and see what they can do to help developers make that happen. But they're not willing to do that. They want to get all the money themselves, and at the same time, cry about no affordable housing.
All right, I'm looking at the, one of the plans that chose the trail from the end of Ward Street, potentially down to Inspiration. On one of the plans, you note that the developer or the owner reserves the right to make that into a street. Why have you been considering making that into a street to take some of the pressure off of Ballantine, as an exit onto Route One?
I've considered it, I've not considered it. When we had the meeting that we held last fall with the neighbors, one of the comments that was brought up was not to connect that up. This will help Eastern Village, this, this North Village is going to get the traffic.
The, one of the folks have brought up the issue of the size of the dog park. Is there a way that you could make that larger?
No, we're not interested in making it larger. We've looked at what dog park sizes are, we had somebody work on that for us, and the size of this dog park is what is traditionally used.
And are you willing to have a article in the Homeowners Association, or in the deed, or whatever, that states that that dog park is available in perpetuity to other homeowners of Eastern Village?
I guess I'd take a look at it, consider it, but I'm not going to make any commitments to that.
The question has arisen on additional buffering. Have you considered that, and are you willing to buffer additionally along the, especially the back areas where there would be visibility to the folks on Inspiration and Ballantine?
I think we're open to that. I believe there was a discussion about that when we met with staff earlier this year, and we asked about along the buffer, and for some reason, it's not on there, but we're not opposed to looking at that.
All right, another question, by the way, an observation about the, the current architecture, and that is, I think it's a considerable improvement. I would, in additional or further submissions, it would be very helpful to me to visualize what the proposal looks like against some of the federal houses, for instance, some of these, to see if indeed the architecture does harmonize with the federal architecture along Inspiration. If that's possible, it would be very helpful.
I'm not quite sure I understand what your question is, but let me say that there are townhouses in Eastern Village that are larger than these buildings. There are many, many homes in Eastern Village that are three stories. Eastern Village height is 45 feet, not 35 feet, like you have in most parts of town. Eastern Village has Vulcan space.
And what is the height on these buildings?
I believe they're less than that, but you have townhouses in Eastern Village that are larger than some of these buildings right here in North Village.
Perhaps the architect could answer the question on what the height is on these buildings?
They're 10-foot per floor, and then you've got from the third-floor plate up, so I'd say they're 42, 43 feet tall. The zoning in Eastern Village is up, allows for 45 feet.
Okay, and there are other buildings in Eastern Village that are 45 feet?
I'm not sure if there are or not.
Okay. Somebody has raised, a couple of folks raised the question about completion of some of the, some of the prior projects. I did drive into, pass down Eastern Trail, and tried to make my way through Eastern Village along South Village, and the condition in the South Village really is as described by the folks here. Can you tell me when that's going to be completed?
Sure. We planned on finishing that when the last building was finished, and that happened last week. The roads that you have in Eastern Village outside of Ginger Muse and a portion of Vista, the town has asked us not to put the surface pavement on. The lighting that we're being beat up on and told to you that is not in place, is in fact in place, it's been in place for months. We can't go and electrify those lights, that's up to CMP. The lighting in the last phase, we put up, and it took a year for CMP to get out there. Angela can speak to these, she knows all about this. And as far as some of the other stuff is concerned, we've got new development that's taken, just taken place in Phase Five. It got paved at the end of June, so you're not going to have finished lights and other things over there when we just got the phase completed, you know, two months ago.
But the sidewalks are going to be completed in South Village, when?
Uh, South, well, we posted a check to the, to the town planner last week for those improvements, they'll be completed before years out?
Before the snow flies, or before years out?
Before snow flies.
Okay.
If it flies early, though, I mean, as long as the pavement plants are open. It's our intention to finish South Village, I mean, it's, it's not landscaped, it's not graded.
I think you've heard some of the concerns, that, that you're precisely right, it's not landscaped and it's not graded, and folks are concerned about that. I did some research, and the buildings are indeed what we seem to have passed.
That's right.
For folks here, there were two different period, there were two different times that the, you brought those to us. The original design that you had, and then a while later, you brought a second design because you changed the, some of the configuration. So for folks who took a look at that, they may have looked at the first design and not the second.
Well, I believe the first design that we brought to the town was back in 2013. It was a completely different configuration, it was completely different elevation schematic, it wasn't even anything close to what we brought to the board well over a year ago, and what is now built. It's exactly what we brought to the board, and it's exactly what's built.
Correct. And, and what I was suggesting is that the folks here who are looking at South Village might have been looking at the original, what came forward originally, rather than what ended up being approved. But as far as I can tell, and I had a chance to chat with staff today, as far as we can tell, the buildings do comport with what your plan was. That's, sometimes we look at architectural drawings, and the architect is very enthusiastic, and puts in trees against the buildings that are at the mature height of the trees, rather than what's, what's put in originally. And sometimes, we just miss the ball. So I appreciate the changes that you've made. I do, would like to see how they fit in with the community around it, just simply to understand its positioning there, to see if it harmonizes, to see if the apartments harmonize with the architecture surrounding them. That would be very helpful to me in terms of making a decision.
I need to understand that a little bit further. Do you understand, Rachel? Okay.
Yeah.
Very well.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment on some of the things that were said earlier, so at least the board members have a understanding of my position there, so it's not just one side? Or is it not worth doing?
I would, I would let the board kind of go through its deliberations.
Okay.
Typically, you know, in a kind of Robert's Rule setting, you really want audience speaking to chair, applicant speaking to chair, board speaking to chair. We don't want to create any type of...
No, no, I just would like to speak to the board about some of the things that have been said, because some of them are untrue. That's all.
I, you know, I think you should be afforded that opportunity. I'd, I'd ask so that you just wait until we get through our questions, and we may uncover some of these items, just as Rachel's pointed out, that the architecture from South Village was, was approved through this board already, so.
Okay.
Just let us do our thing, and then at the end, I do believe you should be afforded a chance to respond.
Sure.
Hopefully, best foot forward.
Thank you.
Roger.
First, I, I remember when this project was initially, you know, planned and discussed, you know, 10-plus years ago. And I, I think generally, like all the single-family homes and the townhouses look terrific, really attractive. And after our last meeting, I, I decided to, just to look up, Google on federal-style buildings, and because of all the comments about the South Village. And by the way, I think this is a vast improvement, what you're showing us over, over South Village. But the dilemma you have when you're designing a federal-style house or a home, and then you get to a bulk-sized building like these apartments, is that you're basically dealing with a big bulky building. You, you don't have all the configurations that you do with the, with the other style homes you have, as well as the townhouses. I'm kind of curious, Kerry, why, why did you not, in this particular area, by the way, you could put, according to the zoning, you could put a variety of different residential buildings in there. Did you have a particular reason you went to apartments versus more townhouses?
Eastern Village was always designed, concepted, and meant to be an inclusive neighborhood of all housing forms, meeting all housing needs at all housing prices, and this is just another example of that.
Okay. The, the buildings on, in South Village, if I recall, are all white. Are these going to be all white as well?
They're proposed to all be white.
Because wouldn't white tend to make the mass, the building, appear to be larger than it really is, versus, because in the rest of your... than it really is versus, because in the rest of your development, you have a variety of different colors.
Yeah, mostly because of how, because the homeowners, you know, we let them take a crack at what they want for a color and as long as the colors are acceptable, they can build that way. A lot of houses I built happen to build white. White is a New England vernacular and, you know, there are, I think, some ways that the massing could potentially be settled down maybe by using some colors, but, you know, I'm not trying to hide anything. I just, white houses with red roofs are a quintessential main vernacular and that's what I was going to do.
Okay. Personally, I think the appearance of colors, the, sort of like the pastel colors you have on some, you know, as you come in Valentine, you know, approaching Inspiration, it looks very attractive.
Earth tones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it looks really nice and I, I think if you were to have a color on those apartments versus all white, it would, it would just reduce the size, the appearance of the mass a bit, but.
Do you agree with that?
Let me just ask a couple of questions regarding the dog park. I understand, you know, you want to keep it that size. Do you have any other dog parks in, in the other development anywhere?
No, I mean, Eastern Village is, it's a walkable community. It's located right on the Eastern Trail. The only real benefit of a dog park, as I'm told, is the fact that dogs can be off-leash, but it's not like they're, you know, on a collector, you know, the project is, is built right off of a collector road. It's, the, the neighborhood's already pedestrian-friendly, walkable and...
It's, it's a little bit of a walk though from say, South Village up to North Village, especially when you have a dog passing all these lawns.
Well, from somebody who supports, you know, I mean, I have dogs myself, have dogs, but, you know, there's a part of me that, that questions whether or not it's even needed. Again, we're in a walkable community along a Eastern Trail which is designed to be walkable. The real benefit of it is off-leash from what I'm told.
Well, I, I mean, I think it's a nice amenity, especially if people are concerned about what dogs tend to do. And, and the thing that strikes me, strikes me is that when you were before us, once before, you were talking about charging stations down at South, South Village.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought, you know, as well as you talked about making accommodations for package deliveries and things like that, and I thought that was kind of visionary, you know, you were anticipating with the future, you know, holes. And I think having a dog park makes a lot of sense. I mean, people are buying very nice homes and I'm sure, I know, I wouldn't want a dog doing their thing on my property and so it might be worth just a consideration to maybe having another one on another part of land if you have some land there anywhere. Along, another comment was about the community center. When you were here last time, I think, I think I recall you saying that the community center was primarily for the North Village.
That's correct.
So it's not to be shared, it's for the rest of, of the total Eastern Village neighborhood?
We weren't proposing it as such, no.
Okay. So basically the reason there's no parking is because you're, you're just thinking people are just going to walk there?
That's correct.
Okay. At the last time you were before us also, the, the subject of that nature trail came up between Ward Street and Classical. And you said that the, the community didn't want it. That's, I believe that's what you said, the community didn't want it. Now, you just stated today that one, my impression, one person said they didn't want it. And I think based on the comments about the traffic that we've heard before, to me that, that's a very logical place to have another way of getting in and out of this So, just a thought there. And now what, can you talk about some of the other phasing, other things? I mean, you, you talked, Rachel asked you about the Eastern Trail access. Now, you said, I think you, you answered her by saying, after this next building is done or this building is done, it'll be done. Can you, can you give us a timeframe when, when you think that's going to be all straightened out?
Are you talking about the entrance or are you talking about the landscape around South Village?
Well, I'm talking primarily about the entrance because I think that was discussed last year, you know, redesigning that entrance.
Okay, well, we didn't get approval on that. We, we have been talking about that for some time, but we didn't get approval on that until earlier this year.
Okay.
But we have been trying to get the contractor back over to Eastern Village for months to do that work and we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with the town engineer and the contractor onsite to talk about getting started. But they are extremely busy and it's not as easy as one might think to call the site contractor up and say, yeah, come on over and do that work now. You literally have to get on the schedule. There's not enough help to do the work that's out there and, you know, we're doing our best, but that is, that is, will be taking place fairly quickly now. South Village, again, we didn't want to do the work. There's still some outside work on those buildings that needs to get done and we were trying to get that done before the landscaping was done. We certainly didn't want to start it until all the building was done and that literally just got done last week.
Okay. At one of the earlier meetings also, when we had your full plan in front of us, I asked you about the, like, there was a center park.
Yep.
Which I guess is, that's Reflection Square, right?
Right.
When, when do you anticipate, is there, is there building all around that right now?
No.
Oh, there isn't?
No.
Okay. When do you, when do you think that'll be developed?
I don't have an exact timeframe for you, but we're hoping in the near future. That's, that's not a requirement for us to get done at this time. Things have to happen in steps and I think that's kind of been lost in, in the discussion here.
No, I, I understand that, but it seems to me that's one, one of the big complaints is that people are seeing things completed in piecemeal, okay? And it's, I can see where they may be frustrated because they, they expect they move in and something's going to be, you know, completed within a reasonable amount of time and it's not getting done.
Well, I don't think we've told anybody when that park was going to get done, Mr. Beeler. I mean, we are now just getting to that phase of the development where we can start to get it done. We couldn't get the entrance completed until we got approval from the town. We just got that earlier this year. Again, I, you know, I'd like to go through some of these things, but, you know, we're being unfairly, some of these things were being unfairly portrayed. The one thing that I will say is that the maintenance down at the Eastern Road and the entrance into Eastern Village could have been better kept up. At the same time, you know, we would go down there and, and, you know, fill the potholes because it's gravel to pavement and within two days, we'd have the same condition that we just got done taking care of, so we could have done a better job there. I, I don't disagree with that. But as far as some of these other things getting completed, again, with, with the exception of one alley and one stretch of another road, we have put on all the surface pavement that the town wants us to put on. If the town wants me to pave Federal Way and all these other roads going in that they're complaining about, I would love to do that as soon as possible because the longer I wait, the more it's going to cost me. The town has asked me to hold off on that. And Angela can attest to that.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
I feel like I'm getting called out. I just, just to be clear, we've gone back and forth with phasing plan and I believe the last version of the phasing plan, we talked about construction routes. And you're right, Federal Way is part of that construction route. So we actually specified certain sections of the road where you're going to be driving over, you're going to be beating up with heavy equipment to get into the phases further back.
Classical.
We talked about that there are some areas that could be done, like we finished up a lot of the surface paving, but there are specific, yes, specific areas that we've agreed upon, the board has seen that, that phasing plan with the construction route and we discussed it at that earlier meetings. So I agree, I, I will take full blame. The last thing I want to do is accept a street with brand-new pavement just to get ripped up by heavy equipment because we know the next phase is starting. So that's the reasoning. But we try to limit it to that route, so it's not just saying we're not going to pave any, surface pave any of the development. It's, it's really trying to limit that exposure.
Thank you, Angela.
Roger. I, I guess, let me ask a question to staff. Is the town satisfied with the way the phasing is going at this point or are, or are the unexpected delays, things not getting done or, I mean, we hear that, but I'm just kind of curious.
I, I don't know as I have an opinion on it. What I do is we calculate out what the improvements would cost and I hold money for that. There have been delays in certain sections and for a variety of reasons, so I'm not going to point at, there's not one reason why there's probably delays out there. I think some things can be addressed, but we're holding money to complete those, so I don't know as I can necessarily, the board can have an opinion, but I don't know as I can. Does that make sense? As some people had mentioned, you can really look at the phasing plan and see where we're at and what makes sense. All I, my job is to protect the town and I have the money in place to complete the work that's not completed.
So, so the town is protected when Kerry goes to California?
On the pieces that he's opened, I am holding performance guarantees for the, the parts that he has opened up.
Okay.
Yes, that we could step in and complete. I don't want to.
It's most of the roads really, it's the main roads going in there, it's the main roads that everybody drives on.
Yeah.
Because those are the main, those are going to be the main construction routes. And again, the areas where they're talking about, there's no streetlights, the light poles are in, the lights are hung on top of the poles. I can't go and electrify them. All I can do is call CMP and we have. And the area that...
And I, just to clarify too, I am holding all money for all those street poles.
We know.
If they're not energized, just because they're up doesn't mean that, I'm still holding the full amount. I guess I wanted to clarify that too. So until they get energized, I haven't released that money so that the town is covered.
And, you know, it's not something where CMP gets out there the week after you call them. Again, we put poles up in August of 2017 and they didn't get electrified until I believe it was August or September of last year. It was over a year. That, that was, that was nothing on us. We could not do any more, so.
I would just like to jump in and, you know, the neighbors do have concerns about the greater Eastern Village, however, and those are heard, but the board should really focus on what's before you tonight for the most of the discussion, so. Just wanted to jump in. I mean, we did have a, you guys did look at the subdivision for amendment several meetings ago and that's really the time to discuss these specifics with phasing and, and greater Eastern Village concerns, but, you know, tonight, the project before you is North Village, so try not to get too bogged down.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that you're, you know, you're willing to consider some sort of buffering behind those homes. I think that would be, you know, worthwhile. So I, I, I'll end it right there.
Thanks, Roger. Rick.
Taking your comment, Jamel, to heart, I'm fairly new on this board, so I don't have the history as some of my colleagues do and I will focus just on this, the plans in front. A lot of the concerns or questions that I had have been asked, such as the buffering with some of the butters and you agreed to take a look at that. One question I have and it's not shown on this plan and I'm looking at C-3.1, there doesn't appear to have any snow storage between units two and four and I'm just wondering if maybe that's just an oversight. It looks like there could be places that might have some snow storage, but the snow storage that you have listed here doesn't seem like it would be enough to handle the surfaces that are going to need snow removal. So I'm just pointing that out. You did show a three-inch-high Ballard light by building five. Please include the cut sheet with that and if it's also germane to some of these other buildings. I, I think you had indicated that another lighting plan or the lighting plan will be submitted with the next submission, so when you submit the cut sheet, could you also ensure that the photometrics of that, of the fixtures are on the cut sheets? And then obviously a photometric layout of the entire grid would be, would be helpful. The heat pumps, the outside compressors for the heat pumps, could you just maybe explore a way to aesthetically make those a little less prominent? I hear some concerns. I hear it on a lot of projects and I'm not necessarily saying put a tree there because you've got to have airflow and certainly trees with pollen get into the fins and it creates maintenance issues, but they've come out with some fairly decorative, low-cost, for lack of a better word, of fencing that are small enough that will allow air with slats through it to just kind of mitigate those, the appearance of those. Other than that, I think things have been touched on that I had on my list, so I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Rick.
Would you like us to address that point? Because we do have, we have taken some measures to do that in North Village.
I'd like to hear about it.
So on the north elevation here, also on the town road, pretty much all around the building, anywhere we do have heat pumps and fences, where you have privacy hedges around them, they're dual-purpose in some areas where there's a patio outside the ground floor and on the town road, it's strictly there to shield them and create a buffer to also bring down the scale of the building. So we've done that on all five buildings. Where we have, we don't have this, we have a garage or something shielding it from, from people.
So I assume on the landscape plans, the finals, they'll be indicated how that would look?
Yes, yeah, they'll be on the landscape plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. All right, you know, we've covered a lot of ground, I think, here tonight. I will say that I think the architecture you've presented this evening is, is a vast improvement over the first iteration of it, so we appreciate you taking the time to, you know, really take feedback from, you know, the members of the community and try to make the improvements there. I think as well, notes that, you know, I'm just going to reiterate it real quick, the buffering, I think, I'm glad that you're willing to take a look at that buffering. The landscaping plan, I, I agree that when you get down into the more detail around the buildings, perhaps there could be a little bit more, it could be a little bit more robust throughout there. And then, of course, just continuing to work with town and I just encourage you to try to keep that communication line open with community, staff. And, you know, I do sympathize to some extent with some of your struggles. I know what you're talking about within the industry, including having to rely on third-party vendors to kind of help complete projects, experience in some of that stuff, so I, I do sympathize because I know it's sometimes can be your name that gets dragged through the mud even though you've put your best foot forward trying to get things accomplished. So I get that. At the same time, I think it's always worthwhile to just try to be upfront and, you know, communicate as best you can with everyone around so they, they have a better understanding. I think, I really appreciate Angela helping understand better, maybe some of the dynamic that's going on between, you know, why, why some things aren't being done right away and why some things need a delay or have to have a delay because I think we all agree taking a busted-up road is not in the best interest of this town, so. Again, I'll just encourage you to work on staff comments, some of the other comments from this board and then hopefully take some, some of the comments from the community here to heart and we'll see you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you. I think he's good. I think he's good. Thank you.
All right, so we're on to our, uh, next item. If we could just ask the, uh, audience, as you shuffle out, to give a little bit more left of our meeting, so we appreciate if you could just try to be as quiet as possible as exiting. Um, number nine, staff report.
I do not have the staff report at this time.
Okay. Item number ten.
I don't know if Angela might.
Oh. All right. Item number ten, administrative amendment report.
Uh, none at this time.
Correspondence. We did have a lot of correspondence, uh, come in on these projects. I believe everyone was served copies through the email. Um, any other outside correspondence from planning board members? Planning board comments. Roger.
Yes, um, um, Jamal, I forgot his name for a second.
Forget my name.
Lucky you, huh?
Yeah. We've been having a discussion about sidewalks, and I asked him to clarify the, um, the ordinances and other, whatever other guidelines, and especially where the street lady is here.
Street lady.
Street lady.
Nickname.
I think commerce. So what do you?
Well, it's my impression that, I've, I've been under the impression that they're basically required for just about every neighborhood, and they don't wanna put the sidewalks in, they pay into a intermodal fund. But now I'm under the impression that the, the board does have some discretion if it's in rural areas. So could you maybe clarify that?
Uh, Angela can clarify if I speak out of order here, but, um, it's, I understand that there are different standards for different roads in town, and some of the, uh, roads require sidewalks, um, and some of the roads require the planning board, the planning board may require them during their deliberation. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, um, in the street acceptance ordinance, it talks to, we have a large number of different types, more so than I've ever seen before. We, we specify down from rural residential to urban residential to, it goes on and on and on, different cross-sections of the road. And so when you get into certain neighborhoods, yes, it shows, those, those cross-sections clearly show sidewalks, and whether it's on both sides. Um, I know a lot of times this board talks about the rural section, 'cause there's some leeway, and we talk about, well, maybe you only do it on one side. Or is it, or is it necessary? Or do you pay? And that's where we ended up establishing this in-lu kind of sidewalk. It's actually a multi-modal fee, because, um, some people have, uh, developers have actually added to that fund instead of putting in a bus shelter, or, you know, so it's all modes for bike, pad, transit. Um, so we were able to set that up with a particular developer that it didn't make sense at the time, 'cause we had future project coming along Goran Road, where the town was going to be building sidewalk. It made sense, instead of them putting a sidewalk in where we might have to move it in a couple of years, to put in towards this fund, and that's where that got established. I think since then, the planning board has been open to the idea, where it seems like you're kinda borderline, and you, you don't know which way to go. It's, it seems to be, um, a simpler answer for a lot of members to kind of toy with, okay, I can live with it, but if you pay into this, we can put the sidewalk where it's most beneficial to the community at large.
What got me wondering about it is actually one of, um, Jamal's comments regarding the table item tonight, and I think he used the word suggested sidewalk or something. In other words, it led me to believe that it wasn't a firm thing, it's something the board could decide whether they wanted to require it or not, you know?
And I think for that type of road, um, it allows the planning board to decide whether one should be provided or not. It's a planning board decision.
And, and if, say they decided not, you know, they didn't require it, that doesn't mean that the developer has to necessarily put money into that intermodal.
It's totally up to the board.
But, I mean, they don't, they don't have to, though, right? In other words, it's not one or the other.
No, that's typically how, the, the board has had discussions and have found that's useful, um, because it does have in the ordinance that, I guess you get into this gray area about required, and it's really a decision by the board to say, does it make sense in this location? And, or does it make sense in, for them to pay in to, to an area that would be more beneficial for that sidewalk? Or maybe you say it doesn't need it at all. So, I mean, that's strictly the board's decision, in certain areas, like I said. It's really about that street acceptance ordinance, and there are certain areas that we would require it. Um, I mean, we start talking about arterials and collector roads and all kinds of things that, um, I know we had talked about in transportation, too. It also matters, kinda what zone you're in, if you're in the rural setting or not.
Really clear, huh?
Sorry. Really your decision, Roger. You just need to guide staff, right?
I need what?
You need to guide staff on what, what you guys want.
I need you sitting next to me is what I need.
Any other planning board comments, Rick?
Yeah, I think, and you, Roger, you brought this up. It would be helpful when we look at, um, site plans for the Downs, if somehow we could have a perspective of where that lot is in relationship to, uh, the, the site that we're seeing, so I would ask that maybe that be included, so that, at least visually, it would help me a lot, understand, you know, if we put curb cuts here or whatever, how it's gonna affect the, the overall picture.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And just for FYI, um, obviously the Downs is moving very quickly, and I'm sure most of you have poked through, see what Phase One looks like.
No.
Um, 'cause I think a lot of people have. Um, that, it's been a lot of work really quickly, and so just, you know, um, staff has been very much involved with every step, and I anticipate Phase Two being similar, and at this point, I actually meet weekly with the construction team out there, um, which I think has been helpful to kinda move that along, too. So, um, it doesn't just end right here, the planning board.
Is, is the construction team, um, rock east team, or is it contracted out there?
Uh, they, both. So, the Phase One had actually three contractors, and so the coordination, um, was quite complex, so, uh, took a lot of coordination. And Phase Two, I believe, um, well, they're always involved, I think was fair, but also Shaw Brothers is out there working.
Yeah, I guess to that end, an update to the board would be that the Downs team is out within Phase Two, uh, logging and grubbing, uh, preparing for, uh, real construction, and we have a pre-con meeting scheduled for next week to kick off the, the actual construction of the project, so they are, they're moving along rapidly.
Will they be working on that intersection over the winter from the Payne Road, or is that gonna wait until springtime because of the paving aspect of not having that top?
I don't know exactly when it'll occur. I mean, I'd ask Angela about when it could, but, um, I will say that, that, those improvements will need to be, you know, will be constructed as, as site plans are being constructed as well.
Well, I guess that's the point. I think they would love to do it this year, um, but they do it in stages, so you'll see a progression happening. And they're, they've designed it out, so they can do it in steps, like adding a lane, but it won't hinder the, the larger improvements, you know what I mean? They, they're doing it in a way in steps. Um, so as Jamel said, as certain sites come in, it'll trigger that, and then they'll get to a point where they can't do anything without improving those, um, the offsite. So, they wanna keep that moving, 'cause they don't wanna have to hinder what they're doing on the site from DOT's point of view.
Sure.
And the traffic that's happening out there.
Hmm.
So I would expect a lot of movement.
Yeah, and in key, uh, along with the, these comments about the, the Downs, there are two ad hoc committees that are being formed, to, one to take a look at the, um, proposed community center, the Edge, and the other one to take a look at the development of the town center. Um, I believe they, there's an anticipation that the deliberations of those committees and their recommendations will be done sometime by January. Uh, the council went back and forth as to what time it would be done, but I would suggest that it would be very helpful for us to meet with those committees once they have their deliberations done, and talk to us about what they thought, what they had in mind, um, for the town center and, and for the community center, so that when something comes before us, we've got a decent sense of what the community is looking for.
It's like a workshop setting, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, workshop.
Yep.
Yes, Roger.
Um, I don't, I don't think we should adjourn too early, so.
Yes. You guys filibustering me? Is this what I'm?
You still don't have a life, huh?
No, but I was just wondering if, if there's any, Jamal has any updates on anything that's been going on in town, or delayed, or anything decided against, or, you know?
What has been happening? Okay.
Well, the reason, it, it seems like, like this meeting and the last one, there's been a discernible reduction in the number of agenda items.
Mm-hmm.
So things appear to be slowing down a bit?
Uh, hard to tell. Um, I think there could be ten the next time.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, this was definitely a quieter period, definitely some pretty dense reviews, um, clearly, since we're here till ten. But I will say that one project that will be starting soon is, I don't know if you recall, the Bessie Commons Two.
Yeah.
Affordable senior housing project, and we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting for that, uh, several days after your next meeting, so that'll be, that's a project that'll be starting up, uh, this fall as well.
The hospice is going.
They're moving quite, pretty fast.
They are.
Yeah.
A lot going on.
And, yeah, we have a lot of subdivisions that are in full swing. It's very busy. So it's kinda nice to have a little.
Yeah, don't complain.
There, Roger.
So I'll, I'm gonna wrap up planning board comments with my own. I feel left out, everyone else is talking.
Just kidding.
I just wanna say, uh, Rachel, I thought, um, you diving in at the end with a very hard, difficult subject, your line of questioning was excellent. Appreciate you spearheading that effort. Um, and then Roger and Rick, you guys, again, you guys brought up a lot of good points, um, right throughout, some, when you get to these difficult projects that, you know, we have a good team. Jamel, kudos for keeping us on track, and Angela, thanks for taking a couple, a couple bullets for us up here. So, uh, that said, I am gonna motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Second.
All in favor. Show that unanimous. Thank you very much. Thoreen, excellent job.